Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our June 1st, 2021 City Council meeting. It is 7:08 PM. Meeting is now in session. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor John Lee from Zaris Church, and Councilwoman Diaz will be leading the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise.
Thank you for inviting me for tonight's invocation. Let us pray. Sovereign God of all creation, thank you for this day and many blessings that we have received. We thank you for the people in our lives, our family, friends, and strangers. We thank you for the ability to use our mind to discern your will and work to create strong and healthy community. We thank you for our city of West Covina and all who serve it, for those who lead and those who protect, for those who plan and those who execute, for those who clean and those who repair, for those who work inside and those who work outside, for those who heal and those who counsel, and those who govern and those who support. We thank you for our community. We pray for all in our community who are hungry, unemployed, or displaced. We pray for all those who are dealing with illness, mental and physical. For these and all the burdens of our community, Lord, hear our prayers. As this meeting begins this evening, give each person clarity, compassion, and creativity. Give them listening ears and thoughtful words. Give them presence of mind and an open heart. We pray all this in the name of the Most High. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor.
Councilmember Tabatzvai.
Present.
Councilman Wu.
Here.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Here.
Mayor Protem Castellanos.
Here.
Mayor Lopez Diado.
Present.
City Attorney, is there anything to be reported out of closed session?
Nothing, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay, on to a presentation. I'd like to invite Ariel Abiol, Scoutmaster, Linda Jaramillo, Treasure Food Bank Coordinator, and Manuel Jaramillo to the front. So this is for the Boy Scout Troop 433 Food Collection Event. In order to advance to the rank of Eagle Scout, the scout must plan, develop, and give leadership to others in service project helpful to any religious institution, any school, or in the community. For his Eagle Scout Service Project, 14-year-old Kyle Britt, a freshman at South Hills High School, decided to host a food collection event in support of the St. Vincent de Paul Food Bank, which is located at the St. Christopher Parish Church in the city of West Covina. The event took place during two consecutive weekends at Von's Grocery Store and St. Christopher Parish Church. While collecting at Von's, the boys gave shoppers a list of items that were needed and briefly described the purpose of the project. Due to the tremendous outpouring of support from our local community, the boys collected 2,034 pounds of food and other items, along with cash donation of $285, which was then presented to the representatives from St. Vincent de Paul. The food bank is now completely stocked and prepared to continue serving those who are most in need of their help. And I do remember this event. I did come and I saw and I donated as well. I'd like to have a few words, and then we'll present to all the Boy Scouts.
Well, thank you very much for having us here, Mayor. On behalf of Troop 433 in West Covina, chartered by the Ox Lodge here in West Covina, we want to thank you for the support that you guys have given us, especially during the Eagle Project for Kyle Britt. His success could not have been done without all the volunteers and all the people who donated foods and funds. Again, thank you very much.
Anything you'd like to say?
Yes, certainly. My name is Manuel Jaramillo. Thanks for having us tonight. We, I'm here to represent St. Vincent de Paul Society here in St. Christopher Church in West Covina. And one of the things that we work really hard for is helping people who struggle day to day with food insecurity. And so, we help out people in the community that need the help, and we also help with clothing, we've helped with furniture, we've helped with other things, just basic needs that people struggle to attain every single day. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your leadership. Now, we'd like to go ahead and present Ariel Abuel, Scoutmaster. And then you have one also from the Assemblymember Rubio. Linda Jaramillo. Okay, his wife representing. And then now the Scouts. Angelo Abuel. Kyle Britt, the head person who was in charge of this whole thing. I remember you. Doreen Britt. It all starts at home. Tom Britt. Wonderful son you have. Oh, here's one. Aiden McDonald. Tony Raymond. So Kyle, did you get your badge? And how was it?
Well, it wasn't, it was just a requirement for the badge. I want to thank everyone who came, including the scouts and my parents. Then I want to thank everyone, including people who donated to the project. This helped, my original goal was 1,000 pounds, and we raised 2,000, so definitely helped.
Thank you. We'll take a group photo. We are so proud of all the community service that you do within our city, so thank you again. Thank you. We invited the LA County District Attorney George Gascon's office, and we also invited the LA County Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Alex Villanueva. First, we are going to do the, we're going to have the District Attorney George Gascon's office give a presentation on, to our communities, to see how we can better protect our residents, help address crime in our community and the region. And I know when I sent the email to also explain his policies and directives and how it benefits the community. So may we kindly have, invite Joseph F. Inigas, interim chief deputy to the front. So I just wanted to say thank you for taking your time to be here today. As you know, we've heard residents complain, this is the reason why we had, how do you come? And I know some residents don't quite understand the directives and policies and how it affects our community, so we'd love to hear your presentation. And we also will have a Q and A from the council, and we'll also give the opportunity for the residents to give a quick, brief question and answer as well. It's not time to bash, it's not time, you know, we're here to ask questions that directly relate to this, and then we'll go from there and we'll have the next one.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of the City Council. I want to start by saying it's good to be home. I was born and, I was raised in West Covina, born in Monterey Park, but my family moved here in the early 90s, and I went to Cameron Elementary School. So I am a proud product of the city of West Covina. I served on the youth council at some point, and I also remember 21 years ago, standing in this chamber and issuing a report that was called Visioning 2020. And so, I remember it being an exciting time back then, thinking what would West Covina look like in the year 2020? And here we are in 2021, and for whatever reason, you know, the city isn't what we had quite imagined back then, and I think it was 1999, or whatever year that was. So that being said, I have a strong connection to this city. My father still lives here, and I'm here often. So, the point of this presentation is to talk about those issues, and I understand this council, this body, is considering following suit of other cities and taking a vote of no confidence. And so, what's important when we consider votes of no confidence is how long have we actually looked at the data? How long have we considered the policies? And how do those policies actually impact the community? I'm proud to say we've been in office for six months. I've served as the second-in-command of the District Attorney's Office, an office that I love, an office that raised me as an attorney. I previously was a high school teacher at Bishop Amat. So I have a wide range of experience, including working with our youth, and also prosecuting crimes and defending victims' rights. So these policies, when the DA ran for office, were something completely unique, were something new, something innovative, that caused us to start to think about how we use the criminal justice system. If the events of 2020 showed us anything nationwide, across the world, was that people wanted to look at the justice system different and say, how do we use that awesome power? How do we hold police accountable? How do we make sure that certain communities are not marginalized or prosecuted more than others? And the message was clear. When George Gascon was elected, he actually said, these are the things that I want to do. And so, I want to talk specifically about the policies, because I believe I have five to 10 minutes. The first policy that I'll get into, and it'll be brief, is that we don't seek the death penalty anymore, and there has been a lot of sensationalism in the media around this policy. The truth is, in the state of California, it's been close to 20 years since we've executed an individual. These policies, in the long run, ensure that certain criminal defendants will still be held accountable, but it's just that we're not seeking that ultimate punishment. I want to move on to something that's very important to this mayor and this city council, which is our misdemeanor policy. And having a courthouse right here in West Covina, actually, right on top of this hill, you see a lot of those cases being brought in for prosecution. This policy is one that I encourage you to look at closely. It's 20-07. It's available online on the District Attorney website. It is not a blanket policy that we will not prosecute misdemeanors entirely. That is a falsehood that's been spread in the media and on social media to say that we stopped prosecuting misdemeanors. That's just not true. If you look at the policy, there are exceptions for each of the categories that we will not prosecute. Some of those cases, as you may or may not be aware, individuals could be cited for and never taken to jail and never show up to court. So what we saw in Los Angeles County is that we had tens of thousands of bench warrants that were issued for people that were cited to appear in court, didn't appear in court, bench warrants were issued, files were generated, and that was at a tremendous loss to taxpayers. So what we looked at were, what are the crimes that will not reduce public safety? Some examples of that. Possession of paraphernalia or a pipe. We took a long look at these types of offenses and saw what was the rate that people actually went to court? What was the ultimate consequence? And what was the overall picture of pursuing a charge like this? What we found was, and if you look at Suffolk County, which just issued a study around misdemeanor declinations, was that the more that we prosecute people for these types of offenses, the more that their future is limited. So think about West Covina. If we criminalize an entire class of people and say, you are now a criminal, they won't get a job, they won't have access to certain benefits, and what they end up doing is continuing to cycle in and out of jail or end up on the streets. So what our position is, is let's only criminalize those individuals who are serious in violence. Let's hold them accountable, and also on the misdemeanor level, we still have accountability. DUIs are getting prosecuted. Domestic violence is getting prosecuted. These are the cases that we really need to focus on and show our community that we're here for you, that the DA's office has not abdicated their role in public safety. When it comes to other policies, including how we treat our youth, there has also been concern around that, and we've made the decision, and we were very clear during the campaign that we would not charge youth as adults. That's something that we haven't strayed from. That's something that a lot of victims' rights attorneys have criticized us about, and you may hear from a couple that are in the audience today. But the truth is that an individual's brain is not fully developed, and the science supports this until around the age of 25. So other developed Western nations have looked at juvenile offenses and said, how do we treat these individuals to ensure that, number one, we don't just give up and incarcerate them for the rest of their lives for an act that was committed at 17 or 16, no matter how heinous that crime was? It's not behavior that we forgive, or that we accept, or that we condone. It is terrible, awful behavior. But as a civilized society and one that says, we're going to look at this system differently, we can look at a 16-year-old who commits a violent act and say, you need to get some sort of treatment, you need to go into a program, DJJ or whatever it may be, and make sure that this behavior doesn't occur in the future, but at least we're willing to take that step. And at all stages throughout this, we provide our victims with services. We provide them with trauma-informed services. This district attorney is the first one to create a Crime Victims Advisory Board, which is members from the community that have both been impacted by crime, impacted by the justice system, and they are the ones providing us with recommendations on policy and how to proceed and how we work with our victims' rights community. Our conviction integrity unit is one that we intend to bolster. We want to look back on cases and make sure that those individuals that are serving long terms and long sentences, if there were issues with the evidence, that we take a close look at it, because we know that convictions that happened in the 70s, 80s, maybe the science wasn't legitimate, maybe there are other issues of bias, that is not a get out of jail free card. That is a very thorough evaluation of the record to determine whether or not a person deserves a second look. I don't know if there are other categories, Madam Mayor, that you'd like me to address, but those are the ones that I see this city had the most concerns with.
Sorry. I know I do have a lot of questions, but I'm going to defer to my council colleagues to go ahead and ask first. But yes, I mean, I know the directives was, of course, the biggest one was the misdemeanor, the 20-07, the youth justice, the juveniles, the pretrial release, and then the cash bail and death penalty, because I know the voters voted for it and for him to dismiss that. And I don't know what the current directive, I know that there was a lawsuit, but I don't know what his current directive is for the cash bail and the death penalty. So you could answer that, but also we'll go ahead and ask the questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, and we'll come back to West Covina.
Thank you.
I hope you bring in something much more stronger to protect our resident. I think, I think you can tell our residents are really concerned. I think our council is, okay, concerned about the policy from District Attorney, and it's kind of soft on crime. And you see, West Covina, predominant low-biding citizen, and you can see they worry, okay? And how, okay, can you can, okay, guarantee your policy will work? What I see is just very soft on crime, and predominantly create, the criminal will, okay, arrest and come out two hours and doing the same thing again. And how we protect our resident with all this burglary and all this crime going on? And you decriminalize a lot of violence crime, and that is become a major issue, we're very concerned. And they're like three-strike, and that been approved, and now you're going to demolish the three-strike, okay? And then you're talking about juvenile, okay, the thing, but the heinous crime, okay, you need to discourage some other kid to follow the same thing, there's some victim won't happen again. The drive-by shooting, and 14, 15-years-old kid have a gun and started shooting, and if they don't have any consequence, okay, how we protect our resident? We sit over here, we promise to protect our resident, how can we do it with the District Attorney? So we, I think, I want to thank Mayor to have this chance, we can communicate directly and our resident to can, let you know how much we're concerned, okay? Really worry all this policy and our police officer, okay, and already understaffed, how we protect and serve our city, the city you came from. I hope you understand. So would you please answer, okay, some of our concern?
Sure. So I want to start with the concept of being soft on crime. So, let me give you a story, Councilman Wu. When I started in the DA's office, not, you know, I remember sitting in court, and we had cases where an individual would get 180 days in the county jail. And I remember one specific event where the person who was sentenced, I saw them waiting outside the El Hambur courthouse when I got out of work. So this idea that people were actually doing time, and this has been going on for years, and this is a question that certainly our office has previously asked the Sheriff's Department, because they control the jail. So when someone is sentenced on a county jail term, if the sheriff lets them out early, that has nothing to do with the DA's office. I'm not trying to shift here what the issues are, but that's the truth. So this idea of soft on crime, we are not preventing the police from doing their job if there's probable cause, if they believe an individual should be detained or arrested. That is their right, that's their job, and that's how they protect the citizens of West Covina.
I don't want to, okay, take too much time.
Sure.
We have a lot of people, but the way you just mentioned about, because if the police arrest a person and the DA refused to prosecute because the District Attorney said, nah, okay, this is not even worth our time, and then there's the problem. Then how can we have our police officers continue to waste their resource, arrest the person, commit the crime, and to bring them to justice? I hope you understand, this is real concern, okay? And we really want to have a communication with the District Attorney, understand, in the West Covina point of view, just by myself, okay, really, really concerned about our resident, the concern, including our family and our resident family, the children, the senior, okay, and low-biding citizens, okay? I'm done with my time, I want to give all the council with their chance, but I hope you understand where is it coming from. We need to, I understand there have some issue, the justification for certain group, and myself is minority, okay? I understand where you're coming from, but at the same time, we need to protect the majority of their well-being, okay? That's why we're here. Thank you.
Would you guys, well, I actually like to add to that. I know the city of Pomona, they arrested, just during his administration, starting January, the data that they have, they arrested 500 prostitution, and all of them were zero filed. But of course, I only care for our city, and I actually got the data for our West Covina to just see how many cases were actually occurred. And some of these are what you said, like the drugs, or autotep, or possession, you know, just a variety of different things. And from January till April 30th, we had 154 arrests that our police made, but 100% of those cases were rejected, and they weren't filed. So, and the reason why I have concerns is because I know our residents come to us, or you know, they explain and they hit, and if I get these things, it's kind of hard for our police to, so if you could kind of answer that.
Sure. And as to the, I just have a, I guess a follow-up, the 154, was that total arrests that were done in West Covina from January to April?
Correct, yes.
So, so every single arrest in West Covina was rejected by the DA's office, is that right?
Yes, total cases rejected per DA policy 20-07, 154. And I do have the breakdown of, and I'd be more than happy to share, but they have the breakdown of the cases, but that was rejected. There was actually another one, because of course, I have to see to believe, they had one that had a person entered a resident's backyard, the police called, I mean, police were called, they threatened the owner, and they found meth pipe, and they did all the paperwork, and it came back as per, the comment says, per special directive 20-07, the District Attorney's Office will no longer be filing these charges. So that is my concern here, and for, I am definitely a public safety, and I want to make sure our residents, I know we just had another case recently, and this is juveniles, that they broke in, yeah.
So what I will address, the numbers that you cited, I'm not familiar with, only because there were more than 154 arrests in West Covina during that time. So, this, the crimes that you're referring to, again, without looking at it, I can't say that these were all per directive. As you know, when a case is brought into the DA's office, it's evaluated. If it lacks evidence, that's one reason to reject the case. Another reason per these directives, it could also be that. So, there will be, what I'll say is, for certain types of offenses that were deemed to be not, that we would not file those cases, those would, could show up in your number of 154, but I don't know that they were all per directive. The other issue that I, again, I would cite in 20-07, if there are aggravating factors or serious risk, there are exceptions to those rules, and our office has filed on those types of offenses. So again, without the specifics, I can't comment on 154 types of cases. of cases.
The exceptions, I know that that directive twenty oh seven dismisses or declines prosecution on thirteen misdemeanor crimes such as drug possession charges, prostitution-related offense, criminal threats, trespass, and resisting arrest. So I'd like to know if someone breaks into my home, criminally threatens me, and police comes and they they resist the arrest of the police, does that get filed?
Yeah, what you've described is two felonies. Each felony is considered either serious or violent. You just gave me two, and so, yes, those would be filed.
Which which two?
The residential burglary, someone entering your home, and the criminal threat of somebody threatening you.
There, but that that's on that file, residents, please. That's part of the directive.
No. So there's the misdemeanor directive, but again, this is all hypotheticals. What you described to me, somebody breaking into your home and committing a criminal threat.
Which two?
Those sound like felonies. Again, there's a lot of, there are elements to crimes that we'd have to look at, but those are not, those would not be considered what you've described to be ones that we would decline. The language that I would cite from twenty dash oh seven is that if an individual is a continuing threat to another individual or there exists another circumstance of similar gravity, they can be filed. So what you've described is right on point to the directive.
It has to continue, but the first first offense doesn't count, does it?
No, it's in the alternative.
Okay, well, we just had, and and because we're talking about West Covina, I know we had one resident in the east side who was burglarized three juveniles. There was, she had the camera live, was able to contact police. They did arrest the three juveniles, but they were released within twenty-four hours. That resident's home was then burglarized later on. How how does that affect, I mean, the directive on that case because he's juvenile?
No, I understand, Madam Mayor, the the premise of what you're asking me, I don't understand that, but I I think for me to comment on these cases with limited facts is is not responsible in terms of the juveniles and the break into the home. I don't know if this is an open case. I don't know if the same set of individuals broke into the home twice. I don't know if the case was presented. I I don't have these facts. And so what you're asking me is to opine on a situation where taking into consideration, this DA took office during COVID and the courts had set an emergency bail schedule. So you're talking about release, you're talking, these are things that, again, without reading reports, I I just, you know, I'm not in a position to say this was a result of directives.
Go ahead, Council.
I do have a question. I want to run a scenario that occurred prior prior to our new DA. It happened in Glendora last year during the beginning of the pandemic. There was a guy I remember reading about, he was arrested three times in one day. The first time was an attempt to steal a vehicle, booked, released. Second time was stealing property off of someone's front yard, booked and released. Third time in that day, he actually stole a vehicle. What I remember was that based on the no bail policy set during COVID, that was the reason. But if that were to occur today, I know without extreme details is kind of tough, but what would occur today?
Again, it's difficult to to make assumptions on this, but I can tell you this, if cases are not presented for filing, so if, for example, a person is cited out to appear in court, that's something we never learn about, right? So if the person is earning three citations in a day and is getting booked and released, that's a separate function from the DA's office. And that's what it sounds like happened in this case because if it's if it's happening in the same day, I mean, just thinking about practically speaking, how would an officer present a case, have reports ready, give it to us, happen again? And so it's just not one where I think we were probably even involved with at that stage.
Okay, let me run another scenario, this one because it happened to me about three weeks ago. I was scouting our local parks, looking at our landscape maintenance districts because they're behind in in maintenance. As I exited a restroom, a guy just lost control on me, threatened me, came up to me. I mean, I was looking at his hands because I thought he was about to pull out a weapon. He chilled out and walked away, but I thought it was about to go down. If something would have gone down, he would have stabbed me or something, how would how would that play out?
How would it play out in terms of what, the bail?
Like if he got caught apprehended?
Yeah, I mean, that's a.
Hopefully, I wouldn't have bled out or anything.
I mean, I hope, and again, I'm I'm happy nothing happened, right? But yeah, that person, if they stabbed you or assaulted you, you know, committed assault with a deadly weapon, yes, that person would be arrested, bail would be set because what you've described to me again is a is a serious crime. So that would not apply to our directives or any bail policy that we currently have.
Councilman, yes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the concerns I have is if we have laws in place, why can't we just enforce them? Why do we have to change laws? I'm really concerned about that.
So there's, I mean, there's, there are a lot of crimes in the penal code. If you ever, the penal code is very thick, and every jurisdiction, whether it's Riverside, San Bernardino, Contra Costa, Sacramento, their offices have those crimes that are within their charging manuals that they will pursue. It's completely up to the discretion of the district attorney on how to utilize that discretion, meaning how we pursue charges, what charges are filed, if we pursue the death penalty or not. That is, again, previous DAs in this county have not pursued the death penalty on every single case that was eligible for the death penalty. So these are things that are within a DA's discretion, and that's what you're seeing in this administration, is that he's using his discretion, something he talked about doing when he ran for office, and that's what he's doing now.
Do you have? Go ahead, Councilman Tabata. I'd like to give everybody a fair opportunity, so go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for giving me the floor. You know, I I do want to acknowledge the seriousness of today's presentation, yours and and later Sheriff Villanueva. It wasn't lost on me that it was happening today on June first, day after Memorial Day. One hundred years ago, in Tulsa, Oklahoma, over three hundred black bodies, World War One veterans were murdered attempting to protect a black teenage boy from a lynching of a white mob. Eight thousand people were left homeless. Viola Fletcher, a couple of weeks ago, she was seven years old, the age of my son. She's a hundred and seven years old. I I just, I really wanted to share what she said here. She spoke about that night. "I went to bed in my family's home in Greenwood, the neighborhood I fell asleep in that night was rich, not just in terms of wealth, but in culture and heritage. My family had a beautiful home. We had great neighbors. I had friends to play with. I felt safe. I had everything a child could need. I had a bright future." Then came the rampage, one hundred years later. "I still see black men being shot, black bodies lying in the street. I still smell smoke and see fire. I still see black businesses being burned. I still hear airplanes flying overhead. I hear the screams." She is still alive. No one has ever been charged with a crime. And and honestly, and and I know what what you you've said, and and I have some questions that that have the data behind it, but we we need to deal honestly with the history here. And and the reality is, many of these directives are to deal with attacks, attacks that black Americans have paid and continue to pay. I understand from the directive on on youth, in two thousand and sixteen, black youth were eight and a half times more likely to be tried as adults than white youth. Was this data point, did it play a role in the decision to not try children as adults? The prosecutions on low-level misdemeanors, I know you've spoke about some of them. According to that Suffolk County study, fifty-eight percent by not prosecuting, you're fifty-eight percent less likely to commit another crime. According to the study, and here's my question for you, can you explain how prosecuting those nonviolent misdemeanors actually decrease public safety?
How not prosecuting the misdemeanors decreased public safety?
How how prosecuting those misdemeanors would actually decrease the public safety?
Right, so I I kind of alluded to this in my initial response, which was, you know, when we create an entire class of misdemeanors, when we label people as criminal for behavior that could impact things like quality of life, those individuals go on to have less successful futures and will result to a life of crime. And so the stat by Suffolk County said that the probability of a future misdemeanor complaint increased by sixty percent. And in fact, the probability once someone has a misdemeanor conviction that they would commit a violent offense goes up forty-seven percent. So what you're doing is introducing an individual to remain in a system and not be productive in society. And again, we're focusing on low-level misdemeanor offenses.
As as far as cash bail, if I understand correctly, in the Humphreys case, the California Supreme Court has eliminated cash bail for those who cannot afford it. Can you explain how this decision impacts the directive?
Right, so what our directive intended to do was address the inequity in the bail system. So if an individual, for example, has bail set at five thousand dollars with their indigent, and they cannot afford to post bail, they will remain in custody for up until the time that a trial is completed. And what that means that is that for a low-level offense, potentially, an individual could spend months and months in custody to fight a case that they may ultimately get acquitted of. But what's happened in the meantime, they have lost their job, they're not providing for their family, there are evictions in play. For what? Because they couldn't afford to post bail. But an individual who is situated with the same type of offense that earns a higher income could post bail, get out, fight the case from out of custody, not risk losing their job, not risk losing their children. And these are the types of things that we addressed that Humphreys also addressed by the California State Supreme Court.
Prior to Humphreys, the Ella Baker Center for Human Rights reported that the burden of bail fell disproportionately on black and Latina women. Can that burden create a public safety concern for the citizens of LA County?
Absolutely. The more that our citizens of LA County and just generally in the state of California and the country are subjected to these conditions, the less productive they become, the more they could be involved in things like human trafficking and other events that could actually create more of harm, more of a harm to our society.
Okay, and last on on the death penalty, I'm sure you're familiar with McCleskey versus Kemp. So I just wanted to to say, the late Justice Antonin Scalia said in McCleskey that the statistical evidence of de facto racial discrimination is real, that racial disparities in criminal justice sentencing are inevitable. Justice Brennan in dissent wrote, "The court was afraid of too much justice." Can you explain McCleskey and if it played a role in the directive specifically to the death penalty and specifically to to black defendants?
The overarching principles of McCleskey did play a role in our directive. I don't believe we cited McCleskey specifically in the directive, but again, you cited one of the most conservative jurists in American history, and that individual acknowledged and said, yes, that the application of the death penalty as it applies to persons of color, specifically black Americans, was much higher than any other group. And in fact, in that case, he showed that depending on the race, ethnicity of the defendant versus the victim, that also played a factor into how the the ultimate implication of the death penalty was imposed.
I I just wanted to to close with with a quote from James Baldwin. Before he died, he said, "I was born here almost sixty years ago. I'm not going to live another sixty years. You always told me it takes time. It's taken my father's time, a mother's time, my uncle's time, my brother's time, my sister's time, my nieces and my nephews' time. How much time do you want for your progress?" And that's what we're talking about here. There is, there is a cost to pay for our history, and we we are being asked to acknowledge the inequities in the justice system. And and that's what these directives do. When when McCleskey, when Scalia wrote in McCleskey, he said it was up to city councils, to state legislators, to elected officials, to be the ones to correct the racism in the system. And that's what we are doing here today. As council, this is our power to correct the wrong that Scalia, Judge Antonin Scalia, said was the job of councils and legislators to do. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman Wu.
Thanks, Councilmember Tabata. Tabata with a big speech, sound like you in the Congress, okay? And then we're here in the city council, we are trying to do our municipal, our public safety. Okay, and I hear you talking about equality of race and this and that. It is ideology. I really don't want to go to ideology and don't want to go into the history. Thank you so much for the history lesson, but who doesn't get biased in the history in the one time? For example, Chinese-American, okay, railroad worker, and how about Japanese concentration camp and all this and that, and Hispanic have been oppressed. This is like never end. So so we not talk about the history, we understand the history, but we are want to protect our current resident well-being, our children's well-being, and our senior and our family can walk on the street free, free of the fear. Unless our jobs over here, okay, excuse me, this is my time, we are patiently waiting for your time to end. Okay, I want to finish my speech, please, don't, don't, okay? Okay, but my point is, is over here is very simple. We here elect a city council in West Covina, it's serve and protect our resident. Our policy is make sure our police officer can do the job and arrest the people, okay? Okay, and and we need to fight for our victims' right. We we talk about criminal right, how about our victim? How about our crying parent? How about mom over here crying about, okay, the daughter just sense of this killing? And why is there justice? So so enough of all this ideology, let's talk about how to enforce the law. Enforce the law, please, sir, okay? We we over here, okay, doing this job, it's to try to protect our resident. And if you guy in the district attorney refuse to do, okay, okay, enforce the law, no matter how our police officer, how many we talk about here and talk about the history, they won't bring justice, okay, into our criminal system. So here, I do, when I want, I want to leave some time, okay, and we want to finish our meeting. I don't want to stay here tomorrow morning.
I'd like to.
But one thing is this, please bring back to your district attorney, Mr. Coscon, to understand, we are really concerned about his policy and we worry about our city's safety. Thank you so much.
Quick question. What are the consequences of the crimes committed that are not being filed? Because a lot of the crimes that are happening on in our city streets, I mean, obviously theft, you know, burglary, lots of things that are considered misdemeanors.
Sorry.
Can can you guys, can everybody please? Okay, my question is, what are the consequences of the crimes committed that are not being filed? Because a lot of the crimes that are occurring in our city are considered misdemeanors.
Right. So if, again, I'll point at special director twenty oh seven, which has been the topic of tonight, and you'll see that in that policy, we lay out diversion programs and how we work with, for example, the Office of the Alternatives to Incarceration, which is through the LA Superior Court. We have dedicated hearing officers, one, we have one that works in West Covina. And what those hearing officers do is that the individual is brought in, the crime or whatever has occurred is something that is addressed through that forum first. And so if an individual continues to reoffend, there will be criminal consequences. But our first step in our point of intervention is to, again, work with diversion programs that are currently existing and that we continue to expand.
Well, what if they don't want the diversion program? And if they don't want to partake in that? Because we, it's the same situation, and mind you, I, I mean, I just, last month, I just dealt with a thirteen-year-old gang member with a gun, okay? I have, two months prior, I had a youth attempted kidnapping. So I'm in the field seeing all these situations occur and, you know, dealing with all this. And I like to see action that occurs now at the moment. And, you know, we, I do participate in a lot of those programs, gang prevention, grid, all that stuff, but the problem is if they don't want the help, if they don't want that, because there are those, yes, who want it, those who don't. Now, my question is if they don't want to do the diversion program, what what are the consequences? We just want to know consequences.
It's the same as what has been happening, where if the person, for example, doesn't want to do a diversion program, which would guarantee them a dismissal or a non-prosecution of the offense, that's the same as the individual who was charged with the case that never shows up to court, and it's at great expense of the taxpayer. So like I said earlier, we issue bench warrants, we start the court process. If the person is, again, cited in the field, that citation doesn't ensure that they're brought to court. And so it's the same thing that would have happened otherwise. In this scenario, we're giving folks the opportunity to address that behavior and hopefully not recidivate in the future.
The catch and release situation that's been occurring, and I know it applies to our officers, because residents seek that they're not doing their job, they are, but they just happen to be released back. they just happen to be released back. What can you say about that process?
Like Councilmember Castellanos mentioned, when this DA took office, it was in the middle of a pandemic, and there were current existing bail orders by the Superior Court. So even before District Attorney Gascón, you were having these types of cases where individuals were picked up on certain offenses, they were cited out, they were picked up again. All of that occurred before the Humphreys court decision. So now we are bound by a court decision that says you cannot set bail in an amount that an individual cannot afford. And so what we're dealing with now is state law, and that affects every jurisdiction throughout the state of California.
Okay. And I know that there's different types of acts that occur. I know the special directive, the 2012 regarding the victim services, I see that, and correct me if I'm wrong, if they will compensate families of felons killed by police in the act of committing violent crime regardless of the circumstances, so even if the police officer was shot and killed by that person and they happened to get killed, is that they cover those costs by the taxpayers' money?
If, I'm sorry, if an officer is killed...
Well, no, that they said that it requires the DA to use public funds, taxpayer money to compensate families of felons killed by police in the act of committing violent crime. I'm just curious, because, I mean, I don't want, like, a lot of the directives to occur where our police are kind of saying that, okay, you know, they're going to drop the files, they're not going to file. What's the purpose of continuing to arrest and continue with these things? And even for the safety when it comes to shooting? So, I mean, that is one of them, but is that...
I believe that you were saying felons killed?
If the, yeah, if they're killed. If the person is, we've been having shooting and stuff, so if they are there...
The language is if individuals are killed by the police. And I'll answer that question. It doesn't say that we're going to do some sort of payout, and I think that's what you're implying. But what it does say is that if an individual is shot and killed by the police, that their family, okay, again, because the family didn't ask for that act, the family is not saying that they support their loved one who engaged in that conduct that led to that death. What we're saying is that for that family, we will provide our office and resources to the family. And that occurs for any homicide that occurs in Los Angeles County.
Okay. And please, questions? Any other questions? Did you have? I want to open it up to the residents.
If I could address Councilmember Wu, you know, Councilmember, this idea that we are not prosecuting crimes is just that you go in a courthouse, you can go to West Covina courthouse, you know, Pomona, which is where your felonies are sent to that courthouse, we're still have, there are still prosecutions, there are still cases, we're still doing our job. And so I think, you know, for this body to suggest that our office is abdicated is really, we have 1,000 attorneys that are excellent at their job, that stand up for victims, that want to do the right thing day in and day out. And this city, you know, like I said, is it a result, whatever is happening in West Covina, did it happen in the last five months? Or has this been an issue in this city that we could help with, that we could actually partner with and have these conversations outside of a city council meeting, to say, how do we make it better for the residents of West Covina? That's what I'm interested in. Like I told you, my father lives here. This is a city that I care about. But what I've noticed, you know, I used to go to the West Covina cleaners in the past five years. I can't go at night to the nighttime drop-off because there's so much going on in that area. That was before George Gascon. And so I think we have to really reflect on, how do we make the city of West Covina better for the residents? And what that includes is this body meeting with the leadership of our office outside of a public forum to really say, here are the issues, and then we could together address the community and say, this is how we're going to make it better. But until we get to that point, I think that the votes of no confidence actually impede that progress. Well, certainly, it's your right to do it. We would prefer to work together.
And since you appointed me about regarding my speech, my question, the request, we beg to enforce the law request, okay? And yes, true, we have some attorneys there against our district attorney, and they want to prosecute the criminal, and I think they have two sides, and some of the attorney already, okay, filed lawsuit and this and that. And I think the concern to our local resident and in our area, San Gabriel Valley, is that you can see the crime is spiked up, okay, with all this pandemic and auto-pandemic, and you have a lot of issue and mental issue, this and that. And plus, okay, and you starting with a solve on crime and release, okay, a lot of all this without prosecution, and you set example that the crime is free, okay, you can just do it. And you can just do anything, okay, without even have any consequence. And this is the concern that what we have, especially we sit over here, try to protect, serve our resident, okay, and we hire police, and if they're arrested and they cannot be prosecuted, and whether we have to release them out, and whether we go back to the burglar lights, okay, or to make a problem trouble for all the kid or our senior. So that is the concern. I understand you, that's why we here have a communication. And I hope, okay, okay, you bring this back, see how concerned, okay, we are, okay, and hopefully you understand, listen to, as we represent the resident, listen to us, okay, see what this is really concern. And I hope we can have some chance for our resident to maybe add some question, okay? Thank you, sir.
Next question.
Thank you.
Resisting arrests, is that a crime?
Yes, it's a 148. But again, it's outlined in 20-07, and there are factors that need to be met when it gets filed.
Do they get prosecuted for resisting?
Yes, some of them will get prosecuted, yes.
They all get prosecuted?
Madam Mayor, I just said some of them will be prosecuted.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the residents. And like I mentioned, no bashing, no, you know, direct question, quick question, no statements, no stories, just if we can, if you have a direct question, 30 seconds, please. And there's, he'll bring the mic. And if you can, please be respectful. He'll walk to you, but please respect.
You look old enough to have a family. Are you a father?
Quick question. He said if you're a father.
I actually do not discuss my personal life in these settings.
Okay, well, hypothetically, if you were a father, you're so slippery, you slip out of every question asked you. You know, if you were a father, let's say you had a 12-year-old daughter, do you know who Polly Class is?
I do, that's...
Kidnapped, brutally raped and murdered. And you know what her killer did when he was convicted? He gave one of these to the father. And right before he was sentenced, he said, "I have some final words before I get sentenced." Just, she said right before I killed her, "Just don't do me like my daddy did. You don't think that son of a bitch..."
Question, please. We're going to ask direct questions. Thank you.
I'm asking you, you don't think he deserves the death penalty?
No, we're not here.
You're going to pass on all of that?
Thank you. Can you take the mic, please? We're not here for that. We want legitimate questions.
Is that what we're here for?
Bill? Did anybody else have a question?
Working in the system, criminal justice, is it still that when you go into, like, Los Pedrinos, they break it down by ethics, by, you know, all that? It's no different for girls. This is a world, we're all human, and they're making these terrible, you could be gone next week. My question to you is, are they taking away the children to learn? Some of them were taught at home, not on the street. There's a lot of them in juvenile hall that are sex offenders at eight years old. I worked with them. What are we doing for those kids that the mom and dad put the needle in their arm at a young age? That they couldn't go out and buy the drugs themselves. But I know for a fact, by working juvenile hall and working Chino Prison for men, we got to stop and look at everything. Because where I live in West Covina, I've never seen any of you there.
Can you ask a direct question?
The direct question is, do you guys still look at the numbers, how many times those juveniles, and were their families involved? Not everybody's a stranger that does this.
We got the question. That's the question.
If, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's a... Do they still do it that same way? Do they break it down, like there was 945 boys, and out of the 945, you got to minister, you got to work with every ethic there is? You can't be prejudiced. Do they still do it?
Okay, I think he doesn't understand the question. That's social services then, right? Okay, do we have another question?
Now that a lot of the policies have changed, suppose I have a nighttime visitor coming in my house, and I can defend myself. Am I going to have no bail? Am I going to be exonerated because it's my first time with anything happening to me? What is, how am I going to feel? How are the rest of us going to feel with people that are coming from all over into West Covina? We have changed in our demographics. What about us? We'll be victims, but we'll be a victim that has committed a crime. Where are we in this situation with Gaston?
I guess the last part, that the city has changed in terms of its demographics?
We're getting a lot, I'm sorry, we're getting a lot of homeless in. We're getting people from the outside that are coming in, pandemic or whatever, but it's definitely changing. Not the citizens, but who is coming into our city.
Again, it's being in this role, if you had an incident that occurred at your home in the middle of the night, and you had to defend yourself, certainly that is your right. And so we're dealing with the case that may potentially not get filed. I just, again, without knowing all the facts, it sounds like somebody breaks into your home, is going after you, and you defend yourself, that's much different than other types of cases that were being described earlier tonight.
These are things we think about.
Right.
Okay, next question. Yeah, if you can please brief your question really quick, we have to respect. We also do have another presentation, he's waiting for us, so.
Good evening. My name is Jefferson Deru. My question is, is the DA's office in support of shutting out family members of victims from the parole process? Those are accusations that I've heard against the DA's office, that while I completely am offended by it, I think it also sets a tone of leniency to the extent that pours down to misdemeanors, which seems innocuous, innocuous as you describe it, and somewhat attractive because many do get caught in that web of an unjust justice system.
Question.
But does the DA support such policies?
We do not keep victims out of the parole process. So victims have a right, under the Constitution, to be present, to be notified. If you look at our legal policies manual, we have a whole section about how we notify victims. And so that is not true that we're shutting victims out of parole hearings.
Next question.
Is it true that one of your directives states that a prosecutor will not escort or go with the victim to a parole hearing?
So that, right, that's a different question. We are not participating in parole hearings like we used to. And so what we've done is, there are recommendations made by the parole board, and what our policies reflect are that whatever has occurred within state prison, so let's say a person gets 20 years, right, and they're up for parole at a certain point, they are doing certain things while they're in custody, there's a file generated on how they've done in-state prison, there's a recommendation made by the parole board, the victim has the right to be heard. But what this DA has said is that, you know, we're not going to send DAs in there to relitigate what happened 20 or 30 years ago. So his approach is different. Now, that doesn't mean we're not supporting our victims, we're still providing them with victim advocates and resources. We're just saying, when it comes to the time of parole, what has that individual done, you know, while they've been incarcerated? And that's up to a different body, the parole board, and ultimately, the governor, whether or not the governor is going to allow that individual to be paroled.
We'll take three more questions, and then we'll move on. Go ahead.
Please come down.
Just like I did. Okay, I'll try and keep this brief, but I need to explain a little before I ask the question. We saw when Sheriff Villanueva was elected, that the county supervisors didn't agree with his policy and have done their best to take hours away from him and have even considered making the position not elected any longer. And now we're seeing with DA Gascon, and I'm not going to get into his policies, but the same sort of thing with, let's recall him because we don't agree with his policies. Is there anything that he has done that he didn't say in his campaign? Because I paid attention, and all of these policies that I'm hearing people don't like, all these reforms, were in his campaign literature. He said this is what he's going to do. Am I misremembering? Or are people reaching the point where, yes, you don't disagree with him, but that's what voting is for? You'll have an opportunity in four years to make a different choice.
Direct question, please.
Right. So to your point, yes, you did your research during the campaign, these things were said. The sheriff faced some really serious challenges early on, but obviously has since pivoted to attacking this DA. And so it sort of shows you, what are the motivations behind some of these things? And is it the policies? Because the policies were actually made very clear during the campaign. Or is it a different angle of that, you know, now we're using politics and injecting that into the criminal justice system? That's a whole separate conversation. But like you just said, when people vote, that's their power, right? They use their voice. Every vote counts. And if you look at this last election and what happened last year, it was resounding. And so, again, there will be another election for district attorney in LA County, and that's the time to show up to vote. And I'm not here to pitch a certain candidate over the other. I'm here to say, vote, right? I mean, I believe in voting, go out and do it. And that's what keeps us and our leaders accountable.
Okay, we're going to go, I know he said he has to leave, he has a Zoom meeting, so we're just going to go with one final question. And then he... Go ahead. Quick questions.
I'll simply say that there's a difference between voting and informed voting. But with that said, Gascon was elected, and you're right, individuals voted for him, whether they were informed or not. That same process that he utilized to get elected is also the same process that we use, where 9 million people voted to retain the cash bail system. Per his directive in 20-06, he indicated in that directive that although he doesn't agree with that, and he thinks it'll come before the voters again in the future, he's not going to wait. Explain to me how he embraces being elected in a voting process where the same individuals that voted for him also voted, 9 million people to retain cash bail. Explain to me the hypocrisy or what his thinking is.
Well, that's loaded. That's loaded.
Explain, no, it's not loaded. Listen, I'm just trying to ask a question. 9 million people voted to retain cash bail. His directive, he basically circumvented that voting process and says that he's not going to do that.
Okay, can he answer the question?
Let's, I want to clarify that. 9 million people in Los Angeles County?
I looked it up. 9 million people in the state of California.
Correct. So let's talk about how did LA County vote, because he is a constitutional officer for Los Angeles County. So I'll also cite to you that LA County voters have voted repeatedly to get rid of the death penalty, while statewide it has been upheld. So there is no hypocrisy. This is an elected, let me finish. This is an elected official who has said, what do the people of LA County believe in? That's how I'll lead, and that's how he's led. And so to answer your question, there are directives, there was campaign literature on point, and he's actually doing what the voters of Los Angeles County asked for. That is not hypocrisy. And I have one more question here, and then this is going quite...
So he's going to take his, he said he'll take your last question, you said?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. He'll take the courtesy.
First of all, I do want to say thank you for bringing up data to something that has been filled with hypotheticals and what-ifs. To answer your question, sir, just really fast, I'm against cash bail, but I voted against removing cash bail. Why? Because I feel it didn't go enough, okay? So just because we're against cash bail and the certain way that it was formatted in there, sir, that can explain why sometimes Gascon is elected, but yet his policies are against.
Can you ask him a question, please? We don't need to address this.
Sure thing. He got three minutes, ma'am.
Please.
Okay. The thing I do want to say is this, sir, you guys talked about diversion programs. It's so easy for people to look at 14, 15, 16-year-olds and say, you know what, let's toss them in prison. Most of the time, these are Hispanic males, black males. So what I want to ask you, what are some of your diversion programs that Gascon is implementing in order to reduce juveniles, most of the time Hispanics and Black individuals from going to jail?
So in the juvenile system, we have a lot of different diversion programs. And I got to be honest with you, we have a juvenile special advisor who is probably way better situated to answer the specifics about what types of programs we have. I'm not going to stand up here and make stuff up, okay? So what I can tell you, though, is that we've been working with alternatives to incarceration, as well as our justice partners, to figure out ways that we could actually engage our youth in these... youth in these types of programs. The state of California has decided that DJJ, which was our state facility for juveniles, will be closed in the near future, okay? So now, that happened before Mr. Gascon, but what we've decided to do at this point is start to consider, what do we do with these youths as we go forward, right? When we don't have DJJ as an alternative, how do we create programming that ensures public safety first and foremost, and number two, that these young people do not enter a life of crime and continue to recidivate in the future? And so these are things that we're currently working on, but again, if you'd like specifics, I have a special advisor here, we can get that information to you in an email or however you prefer.
Okay, thank you. Can you send, let them know what your email address and phone number if they want to ask further questions, because I know we have to move forward.
I can do it in one minute.
Can you, can you send us?
I just wanted to ask.
Okay, last one.
Obviously very complicated. Why don't you guys, you can always vote at the next council meeting, the no conflict, why don't you continue the discussion with the DA's office instead of knee jerking this and?
Ask question, it's not, we have public comment after. Can you ask?
Offered to continue this discussion.
Do you have a question?
Discussion need to be continued?
Okay.
I agree. So our special advisor, Mauro Trujillo, will leave information on how to get in touch with us. I appreciate the council members, Madam Mayor, I appreciate your time, the residents of West Covina, a city that I truly love, that I grew up in, I thank you for your time as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Can, up next, we personally have our LA County Sheriff Alex Villanueva himself to help explain, you know, crime trends and just overall presentation, so if we can have him here and present. I never seen that go through. It's working. Thank you, it's an honor to have you here today personally, and I, and hearts go towards today's shooting with a fire, firemen and the fire station, so our hearts go towards that. But thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity and it's, yes, today's been a tough day throughout the nation. Our tragedy with our, our family members from the fire department, LA County Fire, the membrance of the tragedy that happened in Tulsa 100 years ago. However, my job here is to keep people alive today. And with that, I want to give you some simple statistics. These are not, actually, these are not statistics, these are just hard numbers. Victims of crime, violent crime. We closed the year 2020 with a 36% increase in homicides across LA County jurisdictions that we serve. Thirty-six percent increase in homicide is a very big number. Under normal circumstances, a city council, the board of supervisors would be, that's priority number one, this is a threat to everyone's safety, what can we do? And we got pretty much crickets across the board from the board of supervisors. But now five months completed with George Gascon at the helm, our homicides have increased That is a huge jump from last year. And this is all under George Gascon numbers. All right, we were in a bad situation, we're in a worse situation right now. That is concerning. Forcible rape up 7.82%. Aggravated assault up 12.94%. Grand theft auto up 40.11%. Arson up 22.40%. All of these serious violent crimes up double digits, in fact doubled entirely, 100% almost on homicide. I have only two crimes that have decreased that are our saving grace for the overall crime rate. And those are robbery, down 23.94%, and burglary, down 19.95%. And those two primary pandemic numbers. Most stores and most businesses are not open yet fully, so they can't be robbed. Most homes are full of people, they can't be burglarized. That is our only saving grace. If we get back to full, open economy and everything, you're going to see those numbers jump up double digits across the board and we're going to have our crime wave like we haven't seen since the 1990s. Now, I don't know where Mr. Nega was in 1991, but I was on the streets of East L.A. three decades ago and it was a bloodbath. People were dropping dead left and right. We had homicides every week in one patrol station, East L.A. My family still lives in East L.A. to this day, so they, they face the consequences of George Gascon's policies up close and personal. And what these policies amount to is he's experimenting with other people's lives. He's not going to feel the brunt of these violent crimes because he lives in a safe community, manicured lawns, they can afford 24-hour security and they'll know feel the brunt. But the people that live on Union Pacific and Sunall in East L.A., 106 in Budlong, in South L.A. Station, all these jurisdictions of LAPD, throughout the St. Gabriel Valley, Lancaster, Palmdale, our communities, we feel the brunt. And the bottom line is, our criminal justice system and the reason why we incarcerate people serves four functions. Function number one is retribution, eye for an eye. You do this, that's what happens to you. Number two, this is very important, incapacitation. When you're in jail, you cannot recidivate, you cannot harm people. If you're a child molester, cooling your heels in the state prison or waiting trial, you cannot molest other children. If you're a killer, you can't kill more people, although you still have the potential of killing a fellow inmate. And that is of concern, and that does happen very often. Third reason is deterrence. Two types, you have general deterrence, self-deterrence. General deterrence is, that guy went to jail for that reason, maybe I'm not going to do that because I don't want it to happen to me, what happened to him? That's general deterrence. Self-deterrence is, I got busted stealing, robbing a store, maybe I won't rob a store again. So that's the two types of deterrence. And the last but not least is rehabilitation. Our jail system, state prison system is supposed to rehabilitate the people that are in our care and control because ultimately, there are responsibilities, we owe it to them to try to get them, when they leave, they're in better shape than when they got to the jail. But we can't do that, we're being defunded, discredited, delegitimized, marginalized, if somehow the criminal justice system is on trial while all these crimes are going through the roof. So with that in mind, as a private citizen, I have endorsed and signed the recall petition, but I'm not speaking as sheriff of LA County. His policies represent a threat to public safety. Make no, no mark about it, it is a serious threat to everyone's public safety. There has to be consequences if you engage in crime. Right now, I have merchants that are watching people go into their store, shop till they get $949 and just walk out. The big box stores won't even allow their employees to stop the person because they don't want the liability. Because the DA is not going to prosecute, so why the hassle? Let's avoid the lawsuit, just let them walk away. And they're instructing their employees to do that. Now, the small mom and pop shops don't have the luxury to write off the loss. They just go bankrupt, they close their doors, they can't serve their customers anymore. So they have to let go of their employees and close shop. I have friends who are restaurant owners, every night, a big table of eight, 300, 400 bucks, they just walk away laughing. All they know is to keep the tab under 950, they face no consequences. That is a problem. And these are, these are more than just quality of life issues, but they're all under Gascon's directive. I've heard people, again, including Mr. Nega's, with his vast experience in prosecuting crime, suggest somehow that it makes us safer if we don't engage in arresting misdemeanor crimes. I could tell you nothing further from the truth could ever be uttered than that statement right there. When there are no consequences, people adapt to the lack of consequences and they just don't report the crime anymore. They don't. Well, we used to get the calls of petty thefts, there was a charge called petty theft with the prior 666 of the penal code, they just don't even bother reporting it anymore. It'll appear on taxes and everyone here in this room is going to pay more taxes because they're offset from the loss of the store, whatever the business is. That is a big problem. Because then dishonest academicians and people like George Gascon say, look, there's, Suffolk County says, hey, if we don't, if we don't arrest these people for these misdemeanor crimes, there's less crime. No, there's less people reporting crime. Crime is actually increasing, but they will not capture it and they will not admit to that. And that is dishonesty. It's academic dishonesty and also puts people's lives in jeopardy. I'll give you something more closer to home, a lot personal. The death, the murder of Keith Boyer. This happened back in 2017. I was a watch commander at Pico River Station, we got the call, we sent everybody, roll in code three to Whittier, and there was a shootout, the suspect was taken into custody, was going to face a death penalty. That day, not only did he shoot and kill his cousin, he then shot and killed Keith Boyer, shot another officer from Whittier PD, and his only regret when interviewed is they didn't kill enough cops. And this person no longer faces the death penalty. And let me give you another one, as if that, you couldn't get worse than that, but you can, under George Gascon. A gentleman who was 17 years old and I believe 11 months decides to kill his girlfriend and his girlfriend's friend, and to burn down the apartment to hide the evidence. So if Mr. Gascon wants to relax comfortably in the belief that his brain wasn't fully developed, he's going to release him at the age of 25. So he's going to do six years for a double homicide. And he's going to come out unrepentant, judging by his social media postings and in the prime of his life. That is George Gascon's policy, that is how it's directly affecting the community. It affects primarily the black and brown communities, not the places where Mr. Gascon lives, not the mansions over there on the west side of town or the Bay Area billionaires that funded his campaign, not at all. So that is a concern of mine. I'll give you one really close to home. South Ilmane, an elderly Asian rideshare driver gets assaulted, pistol-whipped and robbed at gunpoint by a person who had multiple strikes on his record, gang member, 26 years old. He eliminated gun enhancements, gang enhancements, all the strikes, so it's going to be just charged for one robbery. I think maybe they threw an elderly abuse. So this person can potentially be released in his early 30s. That person does not belong on the streets in his early 30s. That is someone I like to see in his 50s or 60s maybe, when he had enough time to think about it to go back to the streets. And in the meantime, he should work diligently to recompense that poor rideshare driver for what he suffered and put through. Everyone, I think everyone had a chance to see the video on that. That is the true face of crime. But under George Gascon's cocktail parties, they don't see that. All they think about is criminal offenders are the new victims, victims are just inconvenient to the narrative, and somehow he was elected on this groundswell of support for reform. Everyone wants to reform things that don't work. But that's assuming they're broke totally, no, they're not. The criminal justice system does work, it does hold people accountable, can it be fixed? By all means. We need increased capacity to treat people with mental illness, treat people with substance abuse, definitely. That capacity isn't there. Even though we're throwing billions of dollars at it, it looks astonishing just like the resources I had way back in 1991. It hasn't changed much. So when he talks about, oh, diversion, alternatives to incarceration, I'm sorry, but at the end of April, we did a tally of cases that George Gascon rejected, 2,690 for our sheriff's department. That number is over 3,000 now. And these are cases that are directly related to the special directives of the new DA. All the time, there's cases that are not filed because there's something missing and procedural or lack of evidence, which is fine. That's how the goal and the checks and balance of the system works and that is their proper role. And we respect that, in fact, we need them to do that. But I need a district attorney, I need a public defender. I can't have two public defenders in office, that does not work. That's why our investigators are going to parole hearings now, because the district attorney has abandoned the victims of crime. The person who's applying for parole, they have an attorney present with them. They have a whole team of advisors and consultants to try to sway the parole board to grant them parole. Victims don't have that. Traditionally, it was a district attorney's job, because one of the main things that the person applying for parole is going to try to sell the idea was that crime really wasn't that heinous, or they weren't that responsible. They're going to try to sell their innocence to a parole board. That's part of the game that's played. And the DA's job was to call them out on it, say, no, 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 this is what happened, these are the facts of the case. So our investigators are providing the facts of the case. However, I only can cover about a third of the cases, because the other two-thirds lies with LAPD and other independent municipalities. So I'm encouraging them to do the exact same thing. And hopefully some of them will, and hopefully ultimately all of them will, until these directives are done. Now, let me close with one final thing. When you reform, I'm going to put on my public administration hat, there's a way to reform any large organization, any complex operation that involves multiple parties. Criminal justice system has multiple partners. We have the sheriff's department, municipal law enforcement, for example, West Covina PD, that's on the enforcement side. We're the one that are available 24/7, 365, talk to victims, talk to suspects, talk to the families, talk to the community, we are the one embedded in the community, they understand the context of crime and the impact of crime. We exercise discretion when we decide to take someone to jail. We've already exercised it on behalf of the people. We try to find ways to deescalate, deconflict, and where we can avoid an arrest, we try to do that first. That's our very first thing. Let's try not to arrest, because one, we don't want to saddle someone with an arrest record, particularly if they're young, it looks like they're rehabilitatable, by all means, we're doing everything possible, we need more resources on that side. But once we have the elements of the crime, crime is committed, and I'll talk about human trafficking. We do sting operations. We rescue victims of human trafficking, we arrest the Johns, we arrest the pimps, we present this material to the DA, and he says pursuant to the new policies, he's not filing any charge of prostitution. So I do not recall anybody voting to legalize prostitution in LA County, but he has de facto done exactly that by refusing to prosecute. Now we have city attorneys scrambling to form associations with each other to share the cost and actually start doing the prosecution themselves, something they shouldn't have to do. But that, you know, due to lack of, you know, any other alternative, they're doing that. You remember the robbery that happened in Beverly Hills, broad daylight, three men jumped into a restaurant, a very popular restaurant, wrestled the guy to the ground, stole his $500,000 watch, shot another patron in the restaurant and took off running. Beverly Hills PD skipped the DA's office, went straight to the feds, and they got a federal filing with an assistant U.S. attorney, which is admirable on their part because they understand they need a prosecutorial resource that they can rely on to keep their community safe. It is not George Gascon. Now, the recall process is just like the voting process. I voted on a very, very specific campaign and I fulfilled every single promise, even the ones, there's some controversial, I said, no, everyone's entitled to due process, even cops. I stuck to it, I implemented it, and we're enjoying the fruits of that labor now, because now things are working the right way, the department is serving the needs of the community the way we're supposed to. And we're addressing existential threats. But he is actually exacerbating the existential threat of violent crime in LA County and the illegal marijuana operations as well, because now he's contributing to that spiraling out of control because of the lack of consequences for engaging in that. And you all are dealing with your residents, I'm sure you're getting earful about, oh my God, another dispensary is popping up. Two homicides so far this year in dispensaries, so that is a big problem. So this is. So this is my position, and I understand, when I heard Mr. Inigas' defense of his boss, but when I became sheriff, I'd already been on the job thirty-two years, I was lieutenant, and I had a long, long history with the department, understand organizational change and the challenges. But I would not take a deputy and then ascend him to become the undersheriff. I picked someone who was actually senior to me, has a lot more institutional knowledge, and helps me navigate all the challenging waters of becoming a new sheriff under very unique circumstances. He should have done the same thing. But, the problem is, if he picks someone that actually is senior to him or experienced that person, we'll tell him, boss, we can't do that. That's a bad idea. When you surround yourself with yes-men, they'll rubber stamp whatever the decision is, and we have what we have today. You can't come down like Moses with the tablets, and this is the law of the land, because had he put those special directives out publicly prior to the election, he'd have lost in a landslide. I'm very certain of that. So, here we are today. If you have any questions, feel free.
Open it up, Councilman Tabatabi.
Yeah, I do have a few questions. And I was interested, I've read a little bit about your educational background, I wasn't sure if I should call you Doctor Villanueva.
Sheriff's good.
No, you know, I love my students to see the Latino doctor. So, I read an interview where you stated that because of group think, the sheriff's department had fallen into dish despair. Can you talk a little bit about just group think in general, because I think that kind of plays a role in a lot of what's happening?
Yeah, I can definitely, is this working?
No. Is there a problem him speaking on this mic?
How about now? Is it working? Okay. I think if I recall that, I was referring to the days when Lee Baca was in charge and Paul Tanaka. And that's where might make right that theory. There was no one really to challenge bad policies or corruption, because they surrounded themselves with people that thought just like them, enabled them, said, oh, yes, God, great job, boss, good idea, and they had no check and balances, no counterpoint to that. So if there was an idea, a concept, that could penetrate a bad process, it was rejected. They basically engage in self-censorship, because the group is always right, hence the idea of group think. That was Janus, back, I think, nineteen thirty-seven or so.
Yeah. Right, so, and then, I understood when you took office.
Sorry, that was Janus, not Janos, that was a friend of mine.
Yale, right? Professor Yale? Yeah. So I was, I understood when you first became sheriff, you did have the, a lot of the leadership reapply, you, did you, I think reassessed those people who were in the higher places? Can you explain that process just a little bit?
Sure. I ended up terminating or ending nineteen employees association with the department, and that was the top leadership, the at-will employees. And they were literally part of the problem, because had they served their job well under my predecessor, I would not have had the need to actually intervene. So, the biggest obstacle to change, to engage in organizational change, the bigger the organization, the bigger the challenges, is your management, the leadership team. If they're not championing the cause for change, they're not driving it, they're not facilitating, they're actually deliberately stonewalling, slow, you know, basically bogging it down and preventing that change from occurring. So by, of course, there's a threat, when you get rid of the entire thing, you lose institutional knowledge. But fortunately, our institutional knowledge runs so deep in so many professional employees that are not sworn, and some of the sworn ranks that I brought back, so we kind of balanced it out. And I think each wave of new promotions gets a new generation of leadership, and it keeps improving, you know, day after day.
Last question, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I think my one concern, and especially with your knowledge about group think, I was wondering how that's impacted your approach on the deputy cliques, like bandidos, the executioners, those groups, and how you've approached that? Because I understand there was an idea of their freedom of speech with the tattoos, but we also understand there's some investigations and, you know, with those kind of cliques, that group think, that there's real danger of that. So I was just wondering how you were thinking about that.
That's a very good question. My predecessors unfortunately subscribed to that group think idea. There's nothing can be done. Boys will be boys. First Amendment, Fourth Amendment. I mean, those constitutional issues are legitimate, but we took an opinion from county council from twenty fourteen. Same council that's there today, twenty fourteen, said, you, on the tattoo policy, you can't really dictate what somebody puts on their body, because it's a First Amendment issue, tattoos are speech. So if it's not visible publicly, we have no control over what somebody puts on their body, nor do I have the right to ask what people put on their body as well. That is my limitation. So with that, we crafted a policy that forbids the participation in or joining a subgroup, but it has to be connected to misconduct. And there was plenty of missed opportunities in the past where there was misconduct, there were groups that were participating in this, and they just took no action. So, we took the action, we formed the policy, we implemented it. Today, I've terminated ninety-seven employees, but on the bandido case in particular, we terminated four employees, twenty-two of them were suspended, and these are like mid-to-long range suspensions, fifteen to thirty days, so these were not lightweight. We transferred out thirty-six people, so we broke up the entire thing, and now, we're in far better place, because now we're, we informed, and we, I gave the expectations to the entire department, we put it on video, we had every single employee sign an attestation form that they understood, they viewed the video, it's on their personnel file. Now, from that point forward, everyone's accountable, that's exactly what we're doing. So we can address that.
Council questions? Go ahead. Councilman Wood.
I don't have a question, I just want to welcome you to West Covina. I hope you love the town, okay? This is a beautiful city, and I hope.
Been here many times, love your restaurants.
Yep, come over here, we have all the good restaurants, but I just want to share with you, I want to show the appreciation, let, okay, our police departments, okay, work with the sheriff, okay, with you, with your staff, and with the CHP, and we continue to patrol, and we want to protect our city's safety. So I want to continue to have this joint venture, okay, joint task, to continue to help each other. And I noticed something is some county supervisors, okay, we have a joint task to, with the sheriff department, our police department, work together with our homeless, okay, encampment issue, okay, and we want to work, continue together, try to help, okay, the people of the street. So hopefully, we can get a resource and work with the county sheriff and our CTPD, okay, and work together and continue to serve and protect. But thank you so much, and welcome.
Councilman Wood, I'm sorry. Mayor Protim Cascanos.
Thank you, Sheriff, for being here, for speaking. Just a couple of questions. As far as crimes that don't get prosecuted, do you have a plan to publish those, update those somewhere easily obtainable?
We are, we're gathering statistics right now on everything that's not prosecuted, and we're tracking all the non-prosecutions to see if there's further arrests for the same crime. And we're also looking at other ways, if they're really serious or violent crimes, we may go for a federal option if it's available. And we'll also work with city attorneys if they're up to the task of filing, and they're, you know, they've lined up all their ducks for that. And we're going to publish this information, so you folks will be the primary consumers of this, because you represent your community, you do it well, so I need you to make informed decisions, definitely, and that'll kind of guide you. And the danger, the threat is, is how to quantify the unknown. Typically, we look at what the total number of calls for service for petty theft, and if we see a nos drop, it's unexplainable and statistically significant, then we can point to that. And that, that evidence is starting to surface, and it's anecdotal, however, there's so much of it now that we're pretty, fairly confident that it's going to show that the impact of the directives is, people are now less likely to file a complaint on a misdemeanor crime, because they're saying, why bother?
Okay, so it'll be published? And as far as our neighbors, you guys patrol a lot of our surroundings, especially La Plente, and there's been, from everything I've heard and read, a huge spike in violent crime in our neighbors, and some of it spilled over, and there was a very unfortunate, I mean, all crimes unfortunate, but a so far unsolved murder that happened on Amar and Azusa. Do you have any plans in place to beef up the patrol?
Yes. We're facing three existential threats right now to everyone's safety. Number one is a violent crime, which you just mentioned. Number two is homelessness throughout the entire county, is at the point now where it's impacting people's lives, their livelihood, their residences, their business, entire economy is starting to feel the weight, because we cannot be the receptacle of the entire nation's homeless, which is what we've become. And shame on every elected person, the Board of Supervisors, LA City Council in particular, for allowing it to grow under their watch. So we are taking an active role that we didn't do before, but we are doing it now. So that's threat number two. Threat number three is illegal cannabis operations, both the grows, the dispensaries, it's impacting the entire county, and that one, number three, is related to number one now, with the rise in violent crime in dispensaries. So we have a threefold threat, that's a mouthful there, and we're getting defunded at the same time. We lost one hundred and forty-five million in the current fiscal year's budget, the next fiscal year, we're losing another one hundred and forty-three million, we've lost over thirteen hundred positions. So our ability to dig, is to fight crime, investigate crime, and do all the lifesaving things are being degraded as we speak. The DA, hardcore gang unit, the most seasoned prosecutors that handle the toughest, most violent crimes, they've been dismantled and pretty much scattered to the four winds. And that's degrading the capacity to hold organized crime, multi-generational gang members accountable for the atrocities they commit. And he's trying to package it as somehow we're going to make everybody safer? No, it's not. It's going to make everyone's lives more in danger. And we, we're going to push hard against that, and we'll, at least with those type of violent crimes and homicides, we do have some other alternatives, thank God, the feds are keeping close tabs, but we can't always go to them. Sometimes the circumstances don't line up, we rely on the state, or we'll go to the Attorney General's office as well. But we need people to prosecute and hold people accountable, because I know the fad right now is, let's hold the police accountable, and there's people, oh, they're running around, they're making a lot of money off that. You know, George Floyd is lurking, you know, Derek Chauvin is lurking under every corner in every police department. It's a fallacy, but it's useful to raise money, definitely, leverage guilt, but it doesn't address the fact that the threat to particular African-American Latino communities is homicide, drive-by shootings, assaults with a deadly weapon, that's the things that they face every single day. They don't face a Derek Chauvin.
And one more, how feasible is it to get the Attorney General's office to file, if you, if we were to ask them, or you were to ask them?
Under normal circumstance, circumstance, it would not be that hard. Unfortunately, the appointed Attorney General and the current DA share a lot in common, philosophy-wise, so we're going to have to see how that plays out. We'll have to run a few cases that beg for it, and I'll maybe be able to give you more information on that, but a little bit too early in the game.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Diaz.
Yes, my question, well, thank you for being here, I really appreciate what you've told us. One of my questions, well, let me go back. With the increase in crime and the lack of police officers that we're having here now with the defunding, what is your position on concealed carry?
Well, we did, we did a thorough examination of our history of the department on concealed carry. There's two entities that can grant a concealed carry permit, and that is the Chief of Police and then the sheriff. And the sheriff can give a one, say a Chief of Police denies it, which is typically what happens, the sheriff can grant it. So we facilitate the process, we added more personnel, my goal was to increase it by four hundred percent, our concealed weapon permits. We're way past that now, we're approaching the thousand mark that we've handed out, and that's about eight hundred more than ever been issued in the history of the department. So we're, same process, same qualifications. What we did is, we made the good cause standard achievable. Past sheriffs, and I'll single out Sherman Block, Baca, and McDonald, they made it virtually impossible unless you were a retired judge or a campaign contributor or some bizarre combination, so hardly anybody got it. And all we're asking for now is, one, you qualify, you don't have any criminal background, but there's a reason why I should trust you with having a firearm in public, because the job you're doing is hazardous in some way or another, or the condition, say you have the stalker from hell that's out of jail, you know, violated restraining orders, you know, okay, I think that's somebody that I can definitely give them the CCW permit. So it is working, and the turnaround time now is only sixty days, so we cut it down. And that's me being responsive to the community, because with less and less resources available to law enforcement, I can't leave people stranded without a means to defend themselves. Everyone can exercise their right to bear arms in their home or their business, but it's the in-between which is always a challenge. So we're addressing that.
I'd like to open it up to the public for quick questions. Did the, okay, there we go, we have one right there.
Good evening, Sheriff. You mentioned one of the existential threat being the homeless situation, and you mentioned that the department, under your leadership, has taken active measures to correct it. Can you tell me what active roles you're currently taking to correct that problem?
We have a homeless outreach service team. We had, when I took office, there was only six of them, four deputies, a sergeant, lieutenant, Lieutenant Jeff Diedrich. Under his leadership, he created the protocol for the LA Homeless Service Authority, the five-step protocol to break up a homeless encampment, and to do so constitutionally, safely, compassionately, and get people moved on, and the site cleaned up. They've done incredible work out there, where now the homeless community recognizes the host deputies and actually trusts them more than they do all the litany of social work as I show up with our clipboards. They actually, they ask the deputies, hey, can we talk to them? So they're doing a wonderful job at that, but they've been mostly scattered through all the encampments throughout the county, not the places they're congregated. But I got a lot of information about the 101 freeway, Olvera Street, Venice Beach, the interface between the wildlands and the urban communities, like the, all along the foothills, Pacific Palisades, Malibu, all that area, they're existential threats right now. People are dying, every day, five people a day are scraped off the streets of LA and thrown in the coroner's van, five a day. That's a hundred and fifty a month, eighteen hundred a year. And there's people arguing, you can't, even the Board of Supervisors, oh, we don't want law enforcement involved, they're mean, they have guns, woo. Yet, how compassionate is to let people die face down in the gutter? I want those people that say that we're part of the problem, say, no, you take one home with you, feed them, house them, give them the care that they need, and then we'll talk. Until then, no, no, no. Who's their program or ours? Host, host team has been very successful.
I'm sorry, that was the Hope.
Hope is LAPD.
Okay.
Now, LAPD, I'm going to give a shout out to LAPD, they can get the job done, but it's not a problem of LAPD, it's the political leadership that has handcuffed LAPD, that doesn't allow them to do their job. So we're gonna, I have the authority, actually, the state constitution, government code gives me the authority over the entire county to get involved in breaches of the peace, affrays, and all these different things that impact everyone's community. So I'm going to help LAPD in their area, and in both, in Venice, Olvera Street, 101, and we'll see how that plays out, because we're dealing with a whole new set of silos that we've got to navigate. But we're looking at it short term. We're not looking long term, we're looking at, we want to solve a problem now, because people are losing their lives at an accelerated rate, and people are coming here from all over the nation at an accelerated rate. And we can't enable this to continue to get bigger and bigger, and somehow think we're going to build our way out of it by building six hundred thousand dollar condos. That's insanity. But that's what you get from the Board of Supervisors and the city of LA. And we have to change that narrative, we got to get people on the ground, and we're going to have, we're going to follow the protocol, and we're going to do all the alternative possible, give people the housing they need, but we're going to regulate public space. That is a missing element that has never been done before, is regulate public space.
That is a missing element that has never been done before is regulate public space. So that gentleman I met last week in Venice that came from Maryland in December, he needs to go back to Maryland. However he find his way here, we'll find him a way to go back there, and that's one less person I got to worry about in Venice. So we're on the right path, but I won't do an eval until we have some track record.
Any other questions?
Well, I wanted to thank you, and I please continue to, I mean, help our West Covina police also with that thing.
That's my job. I have to support everything they're doing, and they're doing a good job.
Perfect. Gascon's directive, was law enforcement involved in his directive? I wanted to know that.
I'm glad you asked that question. Remember I talked about Moses coming down from the, that's pretty much what it looked like. Anything that's that impactful on so many facets of the criminal justice system and all the stakeholders, you have to incorporate all the stakeholders to responsibly address reform. And if he believed he had the mandate for reform, and I think there's reform that could happen, you start with inviting everybody to the table. No was invited, but apparently the Black Lives Matter activists, and that was it. So that's what it looks like.
Gang enhancement and graffiti, we have been seeing that. I know a lot of them stream from here. Any comments on that in relation to the directives?
Well, those directives ended gang enhancements, ended almost all the misdemeanor crimes, and they call those quality of life issues. Well, the person that just got $2,000 or $3,000 of their property defaced by graffiti, they might view it a little bit differently. And I'll give you one simple example that really shows how eliminating these enhancements threatens people's lives. We had someone who had a catering truck, and they were being taxed by the local gang, extortion. And they send the local gangster, they had to pay him a weekly base, and they kept upping the ante. This guy's almost out of business. So he decided to call the local police, took the report, convinced him, good job, we'll take care of it. And then along came Gascon. The people that were arrested, there were more than one person arrested. They were facing not just the extortion, but you added the gun enhancement, the gang enhancement, the conspiracy, everything else. Now, instead of putting someone away for two or three years, now they're looking at 20 to 30 years. But when they got rid of all those enhancements, that person is seeing the people out that he just said he was going to testify against, and they're scared to death. That is how you basically abandon victims of crime, and it's unconscionable, irresponsible, puts their lives literally in jeopardy now, or they have to close business and leave. That's a horrible outcome, and that's all courtesy of Gascon.
Can I ask you a homeless question? About their host team protocols?
Question?
Yeah, yeah. So I was under the understanding from Judge Carter that in order to move homeless who refused services, you needed to be able to supply them with a bed. Is that, is that true, or is that a misunderstanding?
We have to follow the Boise agreement, and we're going to honor that, and we're going to get a bed space, bus ticket, safe campground, safe parking, but we're going to find an alternative of our choosing, and we can do that under Boise and get them out of the public space because everyone owns the public space. It's not for one person to squat on.
Right. So then, yeah, so as long as there is that bed, that space should be provided, but that is one of the requirements.
Yes, and we're going to honor the Boise requirement.
Actually, there was three questions. If you can kindly make it quick, go ahead.
Hello, Mr. Villanueva. I'm John Carson. I'm the one that asked you to come out here and--
Oh, thank you for that.
My daughter was murdered in Las Vegas 10 years ago. So I dealt with the DA in Vegas, and when I seen what Gascon was doing, it just enraged me. It absolutely, it was like night and day. But I'd just like to thank you for coming out today. I know you had a hectic day. I was watching on TV. It's horrible. My son's the captain of the fire department in Tulare, California, but they're all brothers. They're all, they all stick together. It's a tight-knit group, and I'd like to thank you very much for coming out here. It means a lot to me and the people of West Covina and our council. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that email. It was very, very touching, tough to read, but thank you.
Mr. Villanueva, I did see that you brought a lot of anecdotes, a lot of stories, but not too much data. Can you, you also mentioned that Derek Chauvin, there's not one of those hiding in every corner. Do you know how much LASD spends on settlement payments by any chance? Do you know by any chance how much LASD spends on settlement payments throughout the years? Settlement payments?
Settlement payments, I believe, over the last 10 years, specifically what you're trying to allude, it's about 55 million.
Sorry?
55 million.
So over $55 million have been given to people who have been either brutalized or some other way assaulted by LASD deputies. Is that correct?
This is West Covina, and we'd like to stick with, yeah. Question in regards to directives and stuff.
But I think that's important because it relates to the statistics that he's bringing up. He mentioned Derek Chauvin. He mentioned George Floyd. I think a lot of people in the community have a distrust for the police, in my opinion. So what I'm asking is, can you really say that there's not that many Derek Chauvins in police departments when you guys have paid out so much money throughout all these years?
Well, I'll tell you this, and since you're focusing on payments, we had a lawsuit from a Compton deputy, and he alleged all kinds of things, which you probably agreed with as soon as he said the allegation, between allegation and proving, two different animals. So when we actually had a deposition, we had to ask him, and he had to testify under oath of all these allegations, what is evidence? You know what his evidence was? Everybody knows. It's common knowledge. The case got dismissed with prejudice. So what do the attorneys do? They're making money, trust me. They refile with a new set of deputies and try to throw more mud at the wall and see what sticks. However, no, because when we actually look for the evidence, I had the evidence to do with the Kennedy Hall incident, we took action. You hold people accountable.
Thank you. And with that being said, isn't it possible that multiple arrests that you guys have made also do not have any evidence?
Order, please. We're talking, this is West Covina sheriff questions you can ask the sheriff information afterwards. Thank you. Next question. Next question. Please order next question. And please make sure it's related to the city.
I mean, taxpayer money is related to the city, but I actually have two questions for you. So a lot of what you said was very concerning coming from a sheriff, but one thing that really stuck out to me is you said Gascon, the point of law and order is eye-for-an-eye policies. So my first question is, what are you doing that is actually working to get rid of the gang activity your sheriffs have been involved in within the department? And are you for eye-for-an-eye policies for the deputy who murdered Andres Gallardo?
Glad you asked that question. First of all, I hope you were paying attention when I answered the other gentleman's question. We had the issue about Kennedy Hall and East L.A. Station, the concern, we took action. And we investigated both criminally and administratively. We gave it to the DA. They did their analysis as well, their Justice System Integrity Division. As a result of that, we ended up terminating four employees, disciplining 22, transferring 36. My first day in office, I removed the captain of East L.A. from his command because I had no confidence in him doing his job. Now, you tell me what else I could have done short of lining up people and shooting them on the street that's going to, in your mind, believe that we're taking this matter seriously. We have to go on evidence and on facts. I also inherited 66 wrongful termination lawsuits. Remember the jump-off boys back in Lee Baca's time? Well, if you weren't paying attention then, they fired, I believe, seven employees. Six of them got their job back. One of them, I had to pay nine years of back pay because they violated their First and Fourth Amendment, and they did not give them the due process guaranteed by the Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution. So I have to walk that fine line, evidence-based decision, sound investigations. We take all information, we verify everything, and when I make that decision, it sticks because it's the right decision. And because of that, that's holding people accountable. However, the Board of Supervisors, Black Lives Matter L.A., all these different umbrella groups that are, they call themselves progressive, when we hold people accountable, they don't acknowledge it. They can't because it doesn't assert the narrative. But what was your second question?
Well, I mean, KTLA did come out with a statement today that LASD is refusing to hand over any other sheriffs. But my second question has to do with Gascon, so therefore has to do with the city. Gascon's policies have been proven to work in other states and cities. Such policies also alleviate the pressure of police and sheriff departments. Why are you against such policies if they support, they end up supporting you? It just seems like you're against this, the reason you're against this is purely political.
I'd say, who proved what? That's a who proved what? That's a canned campaign stump speech from the same crowd that wants--
Representative came in, gave you a bunch of data. Councilmember Tabatifi gave a bunch of data about why these policies are beneficial. So if you're attacking me for not listening, it seems like you're not listening.
Oh, I listened very clearly. There's a difference between opinions and facts. The numbers I gave you here, these are facts. Here's facts. Homicides. This time last year, we had 63 homicides. That's 63 grieving families. This year, same time, 123. Those are facts. And I report a 95.24% increase. Those are facts. When you have an entity like Crime Survivors for Safety and Justice, it's a front group for George Soros and Bay Area billionaires who are trying to defund or discredit legitimate crime survivor groups, like mothers of murdered children. There's that, and there's a group called Crime Survivors, and they're a 501(c)(3), and they support victims of violent crime. Patricia Wenskounis is the director. They co-opted, the same group co-opted, their name been added, for Safety and Justice. They're a criminal offender advocacy group is what they are. They did a push poll where they bought the results of the poll, saying that victims of violent crime want to see more rehabilitation and less incarceration of the ones that kill their loved ones. And that is, that is a sick joke because I got--
Why is it a sick joke? All right, that's enough, done questions on--
Let's ask, let's ask these 93--
How many is it?
123 families, ask them what they think about that.
Okay.
In fact, yeah, you can ask him right there.
And I actually did attend that murder for victims crime we had here at the courthouse, and I did speak to the family. I just wanted to thank you so much, more so personally, that you actually came here personally here with us today. I greatly appreciate it. It's nice to hear two sides of the story, and today is more that they get the education outreach. Like I mentioned, a lot of people don't know, they're confused, they see all these things that they don't understand. And I know we went over our time with just everything in general, but I hope that the residents, and I know it's also, you know, on YouTube, that they could forward this information out to everyone else, that the residents can hear this. I know it's close home to me, I work in L.A., so I see those statistics. But I just wanted to again say thank you very much for being here. And if the residents have questions to the sheriff, if you can leave like an email address or a phone number that they can reach out as well, that would be great.
We will leave that, and I thank all five of you for your, for your interest and your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. I know that, you know, residents are asking for this no vote. I actually would like a call for action. I'd actually like to request the city attorney to draft a letter to Mr. Gascon to demand to make necessary changes to his policies and directives that affect our resident's safety and victims' right. I personally don't support what's being done right now, and I'd like the input of law enforcements to be part of that process. And, you know, with 88 cities under the county, I'm surprised that the head of law enforcement for different cities are not part of the things that are going on. Also, I know that Gascon's office couldn't answer the questions about the whole, and those were stats with Pomona, the arrests, and with our police arrests, that they weren't prosecuted. And since Gascon's office did mention that we can go ahead and put out, I'd like to know why those weren't prosecuted, those 152 arrests that was made in city of West Covina, why they weren't prosecuted. So I'd like that information ahead also. But I'd also, so yes, if council is okay to go ahead and move forward with that--
I'm okay.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Any objections?
What are we moving forward with?
To request the demand to make the necessary, necessary changes for his policies and directives, and that includes the victim, I mean, the police enforce, I mean, law enforcement to be involved. And including the guess for why the arrest hasn't been prosecuted, things that occurred within our city.
So I just want to be clear, which directives are you speaking of? Because as far as the data goes, the directive on cash bail, the California Supreme Court has already decided that in Humphreys, as far as the--
The special directive 20-07 misdemeanors, because obviously we have a lot of issues in West Covina that residents come to us, come to our police, and then hands are tied, and they're released out.
But the data from--
Right now, we're getting the call, so four.
I understand, but the data from Suffolk County reporting is that it actually increases public safety to not prosecute those--
We just had data as well--
He did not present any data regarding--
Okay, we'll move forward, and then they could bring it up.
Okay, I support the second of the mayor regarding, okay, demand letters, okay, have the city to prepare and bring back to council to, okay, review, and then they can walk on it. So I'm okay, okay, I don't know--
I'll second it.
Second, okay, so maybe--
Do we need a roll call for this?
Are we debating the motion? No?
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, we'll bring back--
Okay.
--the matter for this council to vote on.
Perfect. Thank you. And then I just wanted to make it clear to all the residents in our city that despite certain policies and directives that currently exist, it will not stop our West Covina Police Department from keeping our community safe and arresting those who commit crime, even if they are considered a misdemeanor, and even if they cannot get criminal filings, our officers will continue to protect. So I just want to make that clear to our residents. Thank you, PD, and thank you again. Now, moving forward, I know it's on to oral communication. How many speakers do we have?
Mayor, we have 21 in-house--
Okay, we'll limit it to three minutes. Thank you.
Our first speaker is John Carson, followed by Colette Lewis, followed by Elsie Metzman.
I'm John Carson from West Covina, a father of a murdered child, Michelle Carson. I am once again asking our council to put a vote of no confidence against George Gascon. I sometimes wonder if we have become so desensitized to murder and violent crimes that our DA is willing to go lightly on these crimes. There always needs to be severe consequences for extreme violent criminals. Going lightly on sentences will only encourage more violence. I really believe that. His directives make no sense and will put all of us in danger. Gascon has unlawfully gone against voters who voted for the cash bail and has reduced it to $1 or zero bail. People voted for that. I have read Gascon said, talking earlier, that most families of murdered victims want lighter sentences and reform. I can assure you, speaking as a murdered victim's father and being around and speaking to other murdered victims' families for 10 years now, that is not the case. I have never heard a victim say that the murderer of their child or family member got too many years in prison. I've never heard that come out of any murdered victim's family. It is no longer a crime to resist arrest of an officer. This will lead to escalating violence against our officers. I know our officers want to return to their families every day. This will definitely make their jobs a lot more dangerous. Gascon refuses to press some charges against minors who commit murder and other violent crimes and will never try them as an adult. This is a calling card for gangs to use minors to commit crimes. Trust me on this one. Trust me, that's going to happen. He has hired a public defender as part of his staff that screams volumes as to his complete disregard to victims of crime. And we've had 16 other cities that have voted no confidence so far. I had to cut it short, I'm not going to name them all, but it's on record. Gascon has opened the door for criminals who have been convicted to be resentenced for lighter sentences. I wish I had the answer to reduce crime. I believe it is a complicated issue. I was always taught, if you complain about an issue, have some ideas for a solution. I know that going easy on criminals and crapping all over victims certainly is not the answer. My daughter, Michelle, who was murdered, graduated from college with a criminal justice degree. She believed you have to change criminal behavior at a young age. She believed you have to change criminal behavior at a young age. Perhaps we need more officers interacting with our youth in the schools and in our communities. That's an idea that I had. In closing, and that was my daughter's opinion, so. In closing, I do not support a law-breaking DA, and I certainly do not think our city council should either. I'm asking for you guys to vote tonight, but you've already stated you're not gonna do that, but I really wish you would. Thank you.
Colette Lewis, followed by Elsie Messman, followed by Bill Elliott.
It's a pleasure to be here. I'd like to thank Mr. Bryan, who took the time when I made the phone calls months after months to come to my home and, and ask questions when I was trying to reach and leave text- Not everybody has a computer, first of all. So not all of us know what goes on in the city of West Covina. I live in West Covina. The wonderful South Side that's been neglected for a very long time. I've been there 33 years. I've made 18 phone calls in the last month for the graffiti on the trees. Our mailboxes get broken too, and there's pictures posted. They're not little kids, these are grown men. I would like to know, as the mayor, have you taken your time since you've become mayor and drove to the South Side? And you can tell me from Nogales and La Pointe Road and Friendship Park, that area right there, what you may have witnessed in, if you've gone out there?
It's public comment, it's your, your turn to speak the whole time.
Oh, so you won't answer questions, so I'm here wasting my time, not gonna get answers.
Yeah, it's not a dialogue.
If she, if she is the mayor, I'm asking if she's been out there to see that area. That's what I asked. What is so wrong with that question?
There's nothing wrong, it's just not the format. We can continue.
Well, what am I gonna continue for? Because it has to do with that area being a dump? The graffiti not being removed? The park?
I'll answer, I've, I've been there, yes, I've driven around when I mentioned earlier about, and I almost got attacked, that's exactly what I was doing that day.
And my question was to the mayor. No disrespect to you.
I've been around, I drove around the city, but-
So you do see all the homeless there, and you do see the park, and, and that we can't use the field anymore because it's being used for whatever trash and beds and... It was brought to my attention, we have five districts. Mr. Wu is my district. I've been trying to reach him and reach him, and today he returned calls. I did not return his because I was gonna be here. What are the funds that you raised for District Five? Where are they going? For the things that are destroyed at the park? Not the nicer places that you guys like. But we're right there, and it's sad that we're West Covina right there. Because when the construction was being made for that building on Nogales and Valley with the medical buildings, and then that piece of property right across the street that nobody can park and use?
Thank you.
Thank you, man. I, I will call you tomorrow, okay, and I will have all your concern.
Elsie Messman, followed by Bill Elliott, followed by John Shoemaker.
Not in my district. Counsel and everyone here tonight and at home, my name is Elsie Messman, a resident of West Covina. On April 20th, I spoke at the council meeting, and I didn't get an answer from the city manager. Either he didn't hear me, or it went in one ear and out the other. When I asked what happened to the Discovery Magazine in West Covina, is street cleaning twice a month or more? Hopefully, somebody is going to say something about the graffiti tonight, okay? And I'm glad that the city is finally listing the retainer for the attorney. When Chris Friedland was here, the monthly retainer for, was just 13, a little over 13,000 a month. And now it's $30,000 a month for a retainer. My question now is, why do we have a city manager? It looks like the attorney is doing all the work. Number two, in the San Gabriel Valley Tribune, councilmen stated that they were rebuilding West Covina. Most of us feel that he's destroying West Covina. Going from 17th place to ninth worst in 400 cities, that's not rebuilding. We're not stupid. Number three, now the mayor is telling us that TransTech is doing a great job, and does she really know what they're doing? Like the construction of the sewer lift on Azusa, or designing traffic signals. Most of the work is on the traffic for engineering. Mayor, I don't know where you've been, but I don't think you must believe in the tooth fairy, because I don't believe you are checking any of this. And what's really amazing to me, that four people on this council are pushing for the Health Department because of a few complaints. You were voted in to uphold what the residents want and not trying to make a name for yourself. Thank you.
Bill Elliott, followed by John Shoemaker, followed by Jessica Shoemaker.
You know, earlier tonight, when I was talking to that slippery lawyer that was standing here representing the DA, I asked him if he was a father, because I'm trying to humanize this issue with him. He wouldn't go for it, typical. You don't become the second guy in a DA's office run by somebody like Gascon and not be a slippery lawyer, which is another reason I want to remind everyone why we should never have another lawyer, especially a government lawyer, on our city council. It's disastrous. I mentioned Mark Klass, Mark Klass, the, the father of Polly Klass, who was kidnapped, raped, and murdered when she was 12 years old. And John Walsh from America's Most Wanted, same thing happened to his son, Adam. He was kidnapped, and they found his body decapitated in a canal. We have our own John Walsh. We have our own Mark Klass. And this gentleman over here lost his daughter. And every member of the city council are parents. Imagine if your child was murdered and George Gascon would not give you justice. Think about that for yourself, your own family member. Would you pass that along on someone else that you don't know whose child was murdered? God forbid anything like that happens to any of you and your families. I hope it doesn't. But I want you to imagine for a moment if it would. What would you do? How would you feel? You know, someone close to me always says, nobody cares unless it affects them. No truer words have been spoken. I really hope you paid special close attention how slippery that lawyer was, Mr. Nigas. Also, why didn't George Gascon grace us with his presence? This guy was wiggling on the end of a fishing hook, squirming, trying to, trying to, you know, give the right answer so he can get out of here to a Zoom meeting. And, you know, I think that he is a despicable person for coming here and advocating for such horrible public policy. The people elect lawmakers, lawmakers make bills, they, they, they promote the bills, they pass the bills, it becomes law, and then the DA doesn't want to enforce the law. I want to remind everyone, the state of California had an election about the death penalty, and overwhelmingly, it passed. And George Gascon is not abiding by the law.
John Shoemaker, followed by Jessica Shoemaker, followed by Rachel Dominguez.
Counsel, today I'm here to speak. The past couple of months, people have come after my family. Today, I get a brief background about my family. My mom, really good person, but I'm here to speak about one person. It's my dad, Staff Sergeant Mark Felipe Barrett, United States Marine Sniper, stationed Camp, Camp Pendleton. My dad grew up playing hockey, other sports. He was educated in diving and bicycling. Well, June 8th, 2007, that owl crashed. She's coming home to see me for the first time, I was two years old, and was killed on his motorcycle. Diaz, your family, Diaz, your family did come after my family. So now, here's, there's my background. I come from a military background that I am here today because of who he was. I'm a great person, about to be a junior in high school, play baseball, swim, and try and go to the MLB. Thank you.
Jessica Shoemaker, followed by Rachel Dominguez, followed by Kathy Katie.
It's a little different being on this side. The reason my nephew came up is because there is a posting by your husband, Council Member Diaz. And normally, I don't hold the council member accountable for what their family is doing, because I truly believe that just because you're sitting here doesn't mean that your husband loses his ability to speak to the public, give, you know, his freedom of speech rights. But this has crossed the line. There is a posting where he is calling my minor nieces and nephews names. He's calling residents lazy asses, sorry, I don't know what I can say, fat asses, effing cowards, all because these people chose not to attend the Memorial Day event yesterday. And I'll be honest, I thought about attending the Memorial Day event, but I wasn't sure if there was even one going on. And so, in my family, as you just heard from my nephew, whose father is a deceased Marine, so I, I hope the words of the 16-year-old answers that question. Memorial Day is a very sacred day for us. And I have a cousin whose father was killed, he was a fighter pilot, in an accident when she was two years old. And she posted this, and I thought about getting more into what your husband said, but this really sums it up. Please thank the lieutenant, the young police officer at the airport said it with a wide grin, and he handed me my military ID back. He didn't look at the line above the rank that read ADDC, Active Duty Deceased. It was quick. Today isn't a happy day. It's not a holiday. It's not about the barbecues and the newly opened pools. It's not the beginning of summer, a day off work that makes it a three-day weekend. It's not a celebration. There are other days for that. It's none of those things. But it's all of those things to most people because of the men and women who aren't alive anymore to be thanked. You don't pass them in the grocery store. You can't see them in a uniform. They don't wear veterans hats. It's a day for the men and women whose sense is limited to the hearts and minds of those left behind. Today is a somber day, a day of quiet Thanksgiving, a day to stop and realize that no matter how far we have yet to go as a country, we only have come as far as we are because we stand on the shoulders of the giants who came and went before us. For all of those who have never come home, for those who died in training missions, wars, active duty covert missions, for every man and woman who has given their life so that ours might be a little easier, today is for them. Please thank the lieutenant. I will. So, to answer the question, that's what my family was busy doing.
Rachel Dominguez, followed by Kathy Katie, followed by Françoise Colton.
Thank you so much for having me and giving me this opportunity to speak to you all, which, as a victim, I have not had that opportunity to speak at all. Mr. Negus mentioned that there was an advisory set up for those crime victims' families, but there's not one such for victims, the family. And so that's why I'm here today. Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. When we think, when I think about what my family has gone through, and is gonna still continue to go through, it's heartbreaking, as many of us today. My grandson, who I raise, was killed along with another in December of 2017, still hasn't gone to trial. When Mr. Gascon was put into office in December, two days later, he took off the special enhancement for gang-related. And then in January, my dates are all wrong, we went back to court to try and get those special enhancements back on again. No, in January, actually, there was an injunction put on by the District Attorney's Union to stop it. So they stopped it, so no more special enhancements could get removed. So this was good for those families that were coming in with such tragedies, but not good for us, because they were already removed, and they wouldn't be put back on. So, which would mean that the person who did this crime would have the possibility of parole. Two murders, first degree. Both were asleep when they were murdered. Poor money. So I don't want to go into any more detail than that. However, we had two great lawyers, Steve Cooley and Kathy Katie, who represented us and went back to court with this. A judge who actually removed those special enhancement, took another look at it, and they're back on again, which is great, which is good news, which gives hope for other families. When Mr. Negus talked about juveniles, and I'm going away from this, because there's so much in here to go over, not just my personal experiences, when you talk about a juvenile, and they talk about being tried as adults, I know that there's gonna be people that are gonna have those juveniles do crimes for them, that are adults, because they know very well that they're not gonna be tried as an adult. So you have to consider that also. What else? So much more. I just want you to consider what these families are going through, what they're gonna continue to go through. I thank you for your time. I wish I had more.
Kathy Katie, followed by Françoise Colton, followed by David Williams.
Thank you so much for hearing from me. My name is Kathy Katie, and I have had the honor and privilege of representing about 70 crime victims since Mr. Gascon was sworn into office. I work with a number of other attorneys who are providing pro bono representation to crime victims in response to Gascon's policies. Many of the victims that I have represented, first of all, one is Ms. Dominguez, who just spoke. I've represented a number of victims who are on the east end of the county and have been to the Pomona Courthouse for a number of those victims to try to help them in asserting their rights. And it's been my honor and privilege to do that. My career was as a prosecutor, and I started here in West Covina and worked as a deputy district attorney for 30 years. I can tell you that Gascon's policies are devastating crime victims. Of all of the crime victims that I speak to, and they call me, they're, they're calling, begging, asking if I can please come in and assist them, they feel as though no one has their back, they feel as though there, there is no justice that is going on right now. And in general, I wanted to at least speak a little bit about what the directives are. So the one that affected Ms. Dominguez's case was where enhancements and allegations had to be dismissed. And that was, as most of Gascon's policies are, blanket policies. And so in each and every case, prosecutors were required to go into court to ask that these enhancements, gang enhancements, gun allegations, special circumstance allegations, all be dismissed on every case. And that's what happened. And so these victims were calling and saying, can you please come help us? We don't understand why this is happening. Why are these allegations that are legal allegations being dismissed in our cases? So thankfully, many, many of those allegations are now being put back, and at least on cases that were filed before he came into office. But for cases that have occurred after he's come into office, the allegations haven't been filed in the first place. So you have someone who- So you have someone who, uh, print, for instance, a domestic violence victim. You can have one person who might hit, uh, their partner and cause a number of bruises, but you could also have that same person who uses a gun and shoots that, um, their partner, and then they end up having to go to the hospital with great bodily injury. Under Gascon, those are treated the same because he doesn't allow for an independent review of each case and to allow for allegations to actually be filed when they're appropriate. And, um, uh, the other thing that that affects is the bail. What that means is that it's not a serious or violent crime, and under his policies, when it's not a serious or violent crime, because the legal allegations that could have been filed weren't, district attorneys are having to go into court and essentially, um, a- agree that someone can be released without having to post bail. So thank you very much again, so that I could at least be in perpect- perspective on how this is affecting crime victims in your city. Thank you.
Can you leave your contact, um, number? I, okay, thank you. Just make sure I have her contact info. Thank you.
Françoise Colton, followed by David Williams, followed by Joseph Perez.
Okay. I finally made it here. It's been a long wait. Hello, everybody. Okay, so my name is Françoise Colton, and I'm a West Covina resident, uh, as well as a supporter of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. So Moms Demand Action is a nonpartisan group, uh, grassroots organization made up of non-gun owners as well as gun owners with the goal of reducing gun violence and improving gun safety for everyone. We believe in the Second Amendment, and that can be respected while simultaneously, um, having better protection for people through common sense legislation. So I'm reaching out to all of you today, um, because we need to put on the agenda a couple of things. Um, and I hope you'll agree. Uh, first of all, the Gun Violence Awareness Day Proclamation and a Safe Gun Storage Ordinance. I've emailed all of you, uh, multiple times. I've never received a reply until last week. Thank you very much, uh, for the City Manager, uh, getting, uh, speaking with Paulina. Thank you so much. Assistant, uh, City Manager as well. Hopefully, we can get the Gun Violence Awareness Day Proclamation, uh, placed on the agenda at the next City Council meeting. And hopefully, we can also get the Safe Gun Storage Ordinance on the agenda as well. So let me talk a little bit in the short time that I have. Um, so the Gun Violence Awareness Day Proclamation declares the first day in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And the purpose of this day is to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and educate citizens to declare that we, as a country, must do more to reduce gun violence. The first weekend in June is meaningful as it coincides with Wear Orange. As you see, I'm wearing orange today. Uh, and it's, this weekend is the first weekend in June. So, uh, Wear Orange was created in memory of a future superstar, Hadia Pendleton, who lived in Illinois. She, uh, performed in the second inauguration for, uh, President Obama, and then when she returned home to Illinois, she was killed by a gun. A bullet killed her. She was a superstar, and so her family wanted to commemorate her. Her favorite color was orange, and color orange is also what hunters wear so that they can be safe while they're hunting. So, uh, Wear Orange is now, again, observed every year, the first weekend in June. And I want, and I think, especially after hearing all these people who've had incidents of individuals being killed by guns in West Covina, we need to have a day of remembrance and education about gun violence in this city. Secondly, um, I'm here to also ask that the City Council put on the agenda the Safe Gun Storage Ordinance, which would require all firearms in a home gun, home be secured in a locked container or disabled with a trigger lock. As we know, children die frequently when they find their parents' guns because parents think if they just put a gun in a closet and hide it, that their kids won't find it.
Is for our next, uh, council meeting.
Anyway, so I'm here to basically impress upon all of you to please put this on the agenda. Uh, these are very important issues. I thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Be safe. Have a great week.
You too.
Bye-bye.
As I call your name, if you could please start lining up, the next speaker is David Williams, followed by Joseph Perez, followed by Jerry Patris.
Madam Mayor, Council, thank you for your time today. You know, I, I prepared something ahead of time, but quite honestly, after hearing, um, and I apologize, I'm not gonna try to pronounce the last name because I don't want to be disrespe- um, no, I can't get that right. Um, but after hearing Councilman Brian and what he said, I'll say this. I didn't always live in West Covina. I didn't always live in the best of areas. There were areas that I lived in where we were solicited by neighborhood gang members for my brother and I to join a gang. Didn't live in the best household, didn't, uh, didn't always have the best life. But at the end of the day, I knew the difference between right and wrong, that if there was nothing else that my parents instilled with me was the understanding of, that there were consequences for everything. I think this was, was very unfortunate with this subject of, of George Gascon. What's very unfortunate is that everyone's missing the point here. It's about decisions. As a black man living in California and in the United States, is there an imbalance when it comes to prosecution? Absolutely, there is. You and I will agree with that 110% if we don't agree on anything else. But to, to institute or to bring forth any kind of policy that in some way, as some gratuitous effort, to tell somebody that, "Well, you did that wrong, but we're gonna go ahead and give you a pass on that," it's wrong in itself. Because there are victims that are on the back end of anyone's wrongdoing. I've put forth substantial effort to educate my kids and get them to understand that, listen, there's consequences for everything. When this state said, "Hey, you know marijuana's legal," you know what I told them? It's not legal on Michelle Street in the city of West Covina. And so if you're doing it, and I find out you're doing it, there's gonna be a consequence for that. But I feel that when I brought up this issue of the 9 million California voters, I think that it's sad, and we all know that state law supersedes everything else. So for somebody to tell me and insult my intelligence and tell me that, "Well, we're just giving you what the county wanted," listen, just like some of the other folks did their research on Mr. Gascon, I did my research. Just like they voted the way they wanted, I voted the way I wanted. And though I may not agree with them or his policies, all that I ask is that we just respect that. We are in, uh, in a country that allows me that if I don't like something, then I can stand up for it and disapprove of it accordingly. Just like if you agree with something, you can do the same. But I think that it's unfair that to have the amount of victims that we've had in LA County, and I've spoke to you guys about this two previous times, I think that it's unfair not to give consideration to the victims. This is not an emotional thing. This is about facts. It's not about emotions. I thank you for your time tonight. I know you're not gonna vote tonight, but I urge you that when I first spoke to you, there were only four cities. We could have been number five, which is my favorite number. Now we're at 14 cities. So we can be number 15, and there's a five in that, and I'm fine with that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much.
Joseph Perez, followed by Jerry Patris, followed by John Shoemaker. Mr. Joseph Perez. Jerry, uh, Patris, followed by John Shoemaker, followed by R. Robinson.
I'm sorry, I thought there was another ma'am speaking before me. Anyway. Um, tonight, I just have one item. I realize that both the possession and lighting of all fireworks is illegal within the city of West Covina. I also realize the City Council has adopted a zero-tolerance party policy regarding firework violations and that the fireworks reward program is an in- attempt to increase the police department's ability to cite violators and reward witnesses who report the use of illegal fireworks. Rewarding residents for reporting criminal acts is not new in West Covina and other cities. For instance, it is my understanding that at one time in West Covina, residents could get a reward, $100, I think, if they reported an act of graffiti vandalism, and the vandal was caught in the act. There is a difference between the two reward concepts. Graffiti vandals are mobile and travel from one part of the city to another and from one city to another. Residents are static. They often live on the same block as the person they are reporting. It is the financial rewarding of residents for turning in their neighbors that is my concern. I believe the fireworks reward program takes your zero-tolerance policy too far, and the reward pro- pro- program will cause problems in neighborhoods. Not all neighbors get along. Perceptions of snitching can and often does result in vindictive behavior. I know. I lived in an HOA in West Covina and served on its board. No matter how hard we tried to be objective with fair and, uh, and fair with enforcing our rules, not all residents saw it that way. Vindictive behavior, such as keying a neighbor's car or egging a house, sometimes occurred when one of the neighbors thought another neighbor reported a violation to the HOA. Some residents right now won't report things because they're afraid of keying, uh, their car. Please table the fireworks reward program. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Shoemaker, followed by R. Robinson, followed by Gabriel Rodriguez.
When I first heard this agenda item, I kinda chuckled about, uh, Gascon, that five people who haven't kept one single promise from their campaign are sitting in judgment of a person who kept every promise he made. I mean, it was, you know, I, I thought when the sheriff came down and talked about, you know, Moses with the, with the law, I'm thinking, "Wow! That describes some of the people on the city council. I'm Moses, this is the law, I don't have to tell you." Except they don't think they're Moses, they think they're God. You know? And then you have the opportunity to question a representative of the DA and the sheriff of the county. Teacher asked good questions. Might not agree with him. Real estate person asked good questions. Person who works with the public in, in recreation and things like that, trying to keep our kids away from gangs and things like that, asked great questions. Person in the medical field asked great questions. The retired law enforcement official was silent, except, "What's your position on CCWs?" Not a question on how this would affect or impact, you know, if we remove the person from office or supported this type of thing. Asking a question that draws on that expertise, on that expertise. Every one of you brought, from your point of view, something that, hey, how does this impact? Which was good. As I said, I may not agree with all of you on it, but, hey, you, at least you asked questions. Law enforcement expert. Nothing. How disappointing is that? How disappointing is that? Somebody with the expertise to do something. It'd be like if there was an education program coming up, you not asking a single question. You're a teacher. How it would be impacted and things like that. Or finance questions. Well, you gotta kind of ignore finance anyway, so we go from there. But, you know, clean our own house while you're trying to clean the other ones. You know, do, do a little bit on that, you know, from, uh, from that standpoint. And, uh, I hope, so, you know, one of the things, too, was my grandson finally getting fed up with the attacks on him. The son of a dead Marine who served in Iraq and served in Kosovo. "I hope you're proud of your husband, Councilwoman Diaz, because you're sure not proud enough to use his name."
R. Robinson, followed by Gabriel Rodriguez, followed by Frederick Sykes.
How comes the clock is, it's supposed to be?
Um, when you start talking, sir, I will reset it.
Good evening, Council. Bill Robinson, resident. Uh, I, I prefer, uh, zero tolerance. Uh, you're gonna be wasting $2,000, uh, tonight from the general fund. Uh, you should do, uh, zero tolerance of graffiti instead of zero tolerance of fireworks and starting, uh, residents informing on their neighbors. This is the Peoples of Republic of West Covina now. Uh, it was interesting what the sheriff said about homeless and perhaps 1,800, uh, a year are, uh, dying face down in the gutter. I didn't know that. Uh, also, uh, the, uh, LA Times, uh, science reporter, uh, doesn't wanna, uh, do any news on the subject that I'm about ready to talk about. LA Times is in the pocket of Big Pharma, and, uh, they've, they fund the media nowadays, so... Uh, there's another, uh, vaccine injuries, won't be in the LA Times, but there's a, the acronym is FAERS, uh, Vaccine Injury Website. It's a government website. Uh, between 5,000 and 50,000 people have, have died so far this year from vaccine injuries. Are you gonna read that in the LA Times? No way. Uh, you know, it's just like when we had the sheriff. So, uh, so now the governor has turned the state into a, a virtual open-air prison, and I, I still believe that the public health crisis has been mismanaged at all levels, the federal, state, and local level. And wiping out, uh, small businesses statewide and closing schools was unnecessary. Uh, I'd like to read a paragraph from this book I was reading on the truth about COVID-19. It's, it's titled, "Class Action Lawsuits Against Fraudulent SARS-CoV-2 Testing." "In early October 2020, an international team of class-action lawyers, led by Reiner Fulmich, he's a German and also California attorney, announced they will soon be filing massive lawsuits against a number of governments for utilizing imprecise PCR and antibody tests, which generate huge profits for Big Pharma as well as vaccine and testing companies. And then knowingly using the data from these faulty tests, you know, if you test positive, you get scared, uh, to justify lockdowns and suspensions of basic civil liberties, resulting in massive damage to public health, business, small businesses, and citizens." As Fulmich states, "PCR tests, according to the leaflets that accompany the test kits, should not be considered..."
Thank you, Bill.
"...diagnostic..."
Mr. Robertson.
"...the presence of..."
Mr. Robertson. Thank you.
So that's the basis of the pandemic, is PCR tests. And the whole house of cards is a fraud. And that's gonna have to be proven in a court of law because the media's in the pocket of Big Pharma.
Gabriel Rodriguez, followed by Frederick Sykes, followed by Honorable Steve Cooley.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Gabriel Rodriguez, and I am a resident of West Covina. After listening to Sheriff Villanueva's testimony tonight, it was concerning to hear his support for a vote of no confidence. First, I want to point out the sheer political nature of this vote. Over the last several weeks, this council chamber has been bombarded by outside groups looking to turn West Covina into their political battleground. And it seems like four of the city council members have bought into just that narrative. During the testimony, all four of you just looked for soundbites to further your political career rather than actually answering questions that the voters need to know. DA Gascon's policies will ultimately do more good and help us accomplish justice practices in a more efficient way. The DA's policies include no life without parole, no looking, uh, no longer trying minors as adults, no longer pursuing petty misdemeanors, reforming cash bail... no longer pursuing petty misdemeanors, reforming cash bail, and ending the death penalty. Not only do these policy reforms make empathetic sense, they make logistical sense, and just make common sense. This is simply not an issue that the West Covina City Council should be spending valuable time and resources on, when it instead should be used to tackle the budget and the budget crisis, assisting our unhoused neighbors, or working on the public health department that this council seems obsessed over. I strongly urge the council to vote against a vote of no confidence when you decide to hold that vote later on. And instead, get back to focusing on issues our cities face. Voting for a vote of no confidence will only further waste the money of West Covina residents. Copious amounts of taxpayer money have gone into the tough on crime policies the sheriff seeks to return to, only to be wasted by this inefficient system. In fact, they've been so incompetent that their operations of LASD have been compared to that of a gang. Villanueva's lost so much of his control that he's compelled to remove a sizable portion of his deputies. Anyone who is for a vote of no confidence is not keeping the best interests of the citizens in mind. Thank you.
Frederick Sykes followed by Honorable Steve Cooley followed by Lizeth Hernandez.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, members of the audience, and Frederick Sykes, tired deputy sheriff, 42-year resident and former mayor of this city. Tonight, the majority of the city council had a lot of law and order. Establishing a West Covina Health Department is not addressing law and order in West Covina. Public and school safety, safe, clean, and pothole-free streets, and professionals abating graffiti. We should have been taking care of upgrades for the police department, police station, the outdated fire stations. All these things should have been priority long before you started spending hundreds of thousands of dollars and staff time devoted to developing a health department. One that the residents do not need and that we cannot afford. Even the problem of the big league dreams should have been addressed prior to thinking about establishing a West Covina Health Department. And apparently, the two females council members have not visited the men's room. It's still atrocious. Two yonos missing, floor is all messed up, and you're spending money on this health department. Ridiculous. The graffiti situation, it was a simple problem that's been complicated by politics. And I won't get into the demands that were made for money to get the contract. The bottom line is, we don't have professionals doing the graffiti abatement. You can see in their workmanship. You go down to my neighborhood, it is atrocious. We need to address that issue. It reflects on us, just like that bathroom. It reflects on our city. A professional company needs to be brought in to clean up the mess. Furthermore, when we did have professional companies taking care of the graffiti, when we reported vulgar or when it was racial and hateful, it was removed very quickly. Now we don't have that, that kind of response. And locking, putting locks on gates is not removing graffiti and taking care of our landscaping maintenance. You don't live down there, so you don't know about that area that divides unincorporated South San Jose Hills from West Covina, but you need to take a tour so you can see the mess that needs to be cleaned up. Thank you.
Honorable Steve Cooley followed by Lizeth Hernandez followed by Anthony Arcoso. Caso?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. I listened with great interest to the beginning of this session where Mr. Aniga was the number two district attorney, number two first, the district attorney's office in Los Angeles County. Thousand prosecutors, that guy's number two. He's a grade-two deputy DA. Five grades, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, directors, assistant DA, then the district attorney. This guy does not even know the law. Tried four cases in his career, and he's here lecturing these people and you on the law? Madam Mayor, your example of if someone broke into your house and criminally threatened you, would that be prosecuted under directives? He says, well, maybe it's a felony of residential burglary. No. A residential burglary is very simply entering the residence of another with the intent to commit theft or a felony therein. Your example, three misdemeanors, malicious mischief, criminal threat, and of course, trespassing. It would not be prosecuted. So he doesn't even know the law. Now, I'm going to mention one name in the context of misdemeanors. Kenneth Scott Reedy. Recognize that name? One of your officers murdered. He was enforcing three misdemeanors that would not have been prosecuted by Gascon under his directives. Possession of drugs, under the influence, and resisting arrest. He's dead. He has a death penalty because my office prosecuted his assailant, his murderer. Now, I don't want to deviate too much. There were so many topics to address. It is my intention to write you, the entire council, my observations. One observation I will make here very publicly is that this county is blessed with a very good sheriff. He is a straight talker, straight shooter. He told you the truth tonight in a very eloquent way. And he does it without any real consideration of what may be false critics. He did it because you have to be educated about what's going on, because this is your city, this is your county. And he is giving you a chance, telling you, get rid of Gascon, so you can take care of your city, take care of your citizens, and take care of your county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lizeth Hernandez followed by Anthony Arcoso followed by Sarah Love.
After listening to Sheriff Villanueva's testimony, I evidently had concerns. His support for a vote of no confidence is purely political. It was even more concerning to hear that four council members were for a vote of no confidence without any real research or real information. So as I said before, I want to point out the sheer political nature of this vote. Over the last several weeks, this council chamber has been bombarded by outside groups looking to turn West Covina into their political battleground. This is simply not an issue for the council to be spending valuable time and resources on. DA Gascon's policies will ultimately do more good and help us accomplish justice practices in a more efficient way. The DA's policies include no life without parole, no longer trying minors as adults, no longer pursuing petty misdemeanors, reform cash bail, and most importantly, abolishing the death penalty. These are policies that have been proven to decrease crime rates, reduce recidivism rates, and save taxpayers' money. Voting for a vote of no confidence will harm everyone, not just DA Gascon. Regressing to the way things were does not make the city more safe and will drain the city of its resources. Voting for a vote of no confidence does not make the city more safe, and it drains the city of its resources. I think four council members have a lot of research and learning to do before they actually consider voting this. So as you're getting to a vote, I urge you, please, to vote against this, and remember to keep the needs of the citizens on the forefront of your mind. Thank you.
Anthony Arcoso followed by Sarah Love followed by JD. Sarah Love followed by JD followed by Oli Cantos. Mr. Cantos will help you to the podium.
Greetings, Mayor and Council. I'm Sarah Love, a homeowner in West Covina since 2004, District 1. Okay, I only came tonight because somebody had my Facebook accounts frozen. I'm just kidding. Sorry. You gotta have a little humor. But, no, I do have something serious. So I'm going to read you what I was going to say. I know you're not voting on this tonight, I really wish you would, but I'm urging you to be brave like the other 14 cities in Los Angeles and get a vote of no confidence for DA George Gascon. Yes, he has the evil billionaire money behind him and an endless supply of Soros, goons, and paid actors. That's how he got elected. I know I'm wasting my breath here, but I will never be quiet on this one. Okay? I mean, the governor's just like a, it's just entertainment, but this one's important. In my mind, the guy is a charlatan sent to create division and chaos, which helps the rich get richer and more powerful, and the poor get poorer, and they live in horrific conditions. So that's just my thoughts on that. I also want to thank Sheriff Villanueva for taking the time to come to our city and be the voice for violent crime victims and those to come. And I was going to give my condolences on their comrade in San Bernardino who was killed over the weekend, but I guess there was more stuff that happened today, so my condolences for that also. I'm going to comment on item two quickly. I guess we're in a permanent state of emergency. And number four and five, you know how I always feel, grants always comes with strings, period. And then item 10. I disagree with offering reward money for fireworks because people will turn in their neighbors, and most likely, the working class and the poor will pay fines. So it just bothers me, and if there's a dangerous garage full or something, maybe that, but no, not just for basic fireworks. And last but not least, I just want to clarify again that I do not live in District 3. I do not vote there, have no plans to ever move there. And I will not address the very large elephant in the room. And as my dad says, it's all fun and games until somebody loses an eye, and then you move on to a new sport. I'm out of here. Arr.
JD followed by Oli Cantos followed by Angela Brunson. JD?
Good evening, Council. Thank you for bringing these dignitaries to us. It was very informative, it was fun. I just want to kind of ask that you refocus, because the priority for councils, this council and prior councils, has been the need for increasing our police departments. That is the ultimate deterrent to crime, whether it's fireworks, homeless, what have you. The second point I wanted to make is the stats that were presented here tonight. They were attributed to Mr. Gascon exclusively by Villa, wrote it down somewhere, Villa Nuevas, Villa Nuevas, Sergeant or Sheriff Villa Nuevas. But I think that most studies, when it comes to data, has a lag time in it, and I recall there being early release mandated by the courts. That attributed a lot to the crime that's taken place. There was also early release or mandatory release as a result of the pandemic. I think that attributed to the increase in crime. So it's a little bit disingenuous to say it's all Mr. Gascon. While I disagree with Mr. Gascon's direction, I like to try to at least, on an individual basis, try to see, separate the truth from the exaggerations, what the real facts are, and he stated that those were facts. But I'm wondering if those facts don't take into consideration those other two factors that I mentioned. That's really all I had to say, but I strongly encourage that the focus beyond increasing the police department, maybe not the health department, because the health department seems to be quite a large project that's going to consume quite a bit of money, and somehow, police has taken a backseat to it, and we all recognize the dire need we have for police. So whether, you know, because I'm not, I'm all in favor of reforming police, because like Mr. Aniga said, the system does have a way of sucking in minors sometimes and putting them on the wrong path and stigmatizing them for the rest of their lives, and sometimes because police have done the wrong thing, they really haven't done the honorable thing. So that possibility exists, but I think that's on an individual basis, that is not the system that we have. So I strongly encourage this council to refocus on growing our police department and putting some people out there to enforce these rules and meet these objectives. Thank you. Good night.
Oli Cantos followed by Angela Brunson. Ms. Brunson, if you can unmute yourself and be ready to speak.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, distinguished members of the city council, staff, fellow neighbors and friends. My name is Oli Cantos, and I'm honored to get to be here before you today. We here in our city have faced a number of issues that have played our lives for a good deal of time. We worry about our safety, we worry about what is to happen as we walk out of our doors. We also look to different opportunities that we would like to avail ourselves in our communities. Ultimately, having the goal of striving to be at our very best by having at our disposal city services that are appropriate and adequate, as well as efforts that continue to provide for ways to protect our property values by having aggressive approaches for addressing graffiti, as well as supporting our youth, our senior citizens, and everyone in between. Especially of late, there has been a good deal of rancor regarding animosity of one group toward another, of different individuals ascribing motives to the reasons or actions of others. Tonight, I call upon all of us to unite with a particular purpose, with a vision of doing whatever we can to share information about city services, to join with neighbors in helping one another, not just relying on government to be the source of solutions, but rather having every single member of our community and of every political affiliation join together in a spirit of love and friendship. This is not mere kumbaya talk. This is rather a sense of idealism that continues to grow as I live and breathe each and every day, and as I see the direct value and the result of building up individuals around us, finding ways to build upon common ground, and even when there are areas of disagreement, for us to find ways to work together without a spirit of hate or vitriol. Because ultimately, at the end of the day, we are all fellow citizens and residents of this great city. My parents moved here more than 45 years ago. I grew up in this city since I was five years old, and I moved to Washington roughly 20 years ago, coming back several months ago because of being authorized to telework. But while I have been here, I have seen firsthand
Go ahead, you can finish with.
I have seen firsthand the value of taking proactive steps individually as citizens to make a difference, and I call upon all of us to do the same. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Oli Campos, for joining us this evening and being
Thank you, Mr. Oli Campos, for joining us this evening and being here. Thank you.
Ms. Brunson, if you can please dial star six to unmute yourself. Angela Brunson, please unmute yourself. Dial star six to unmute. Go ahead, Ms. Brunson.
These opinions are my own and do not reflect those of my office or any other organization. Good evening. I am a proud member of the San Gabriel Valley. I volunteer at Lorbeer Middle School and at Diamond Bar High School. I have been a deputy DA since 1997, and for the past five years, I have specialized in the prosecution of child pornography, online predators, and internet crimes against children. My words and actions demonstrate that the happiness and safety of children and families in our community is of the utmost importance to me, which is why I urge you to vote no confidence in DA George Gascon. On Friday, May 21st, Loretta Ho and her son were stabbed and shot to death in the San Gabriel Valley. The defendants' arraignment is June 17th in Pomona. I do not know the victims. I am not assigned to this case. But I do know that pursuant to DA Gascon's directive, our office will not seek the death penalty, not for this case, not for any case. And pursuant to DA Gascon's directive, our office will not seek life without parole, not for this case, not for any case. If convicted, the alleged killer, at worst, will get life with the possibility of parole, which means eventually he'll be released and everyone in our community will be at risk. Think of the message this sends to family members of the victims. The message it sends to law-abiding citizens and to criminals. My cases involve defendants who have previously been convicted of molesting a child or multiple children and have served time in prison. I get these cases assigned to me because they have been accused of possessing or distributing child pornography. Under the directives issued by DA Gascon, I was not permitted to allege these previous convictions. I was forced to pretend as if these defendants had never previously raped their 12-year-old daughter, as if they had never previously sodomized their 10-year-old nephew, as if it was their first offense, as if they had never served time in prison. DA Gascon's policies required me to also seek a probation sentence with no time in custody. The criminal justice system is about the search for truth. But DA Gascon is thwarting that search, ordering prosecutors like myself not to file hate crime allegations, enhancements, or to completely refuse to file certain misdemeanor offenses that affect all of us. He is creating injustice for criminals, victims, survivors, and our community is under attack. DA Gascon is abiding and abetting criminals to violate your property, your loved ones, and your sense of security. Despite being a prosecutor for 23 years, I am helpless to do anything about it because he has ordered me not to do it.
Thank you, Ms. Brunson. Your time is up. Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it, ma'am. City Manager, may you please respond to all the public comment concerns?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers of the public. Council, tonight we had a couple dozen speakers, and I appreciate all of them taking the time to come to speak this evening. Half of those, I counted 12, were comments related to the presentations from the sheriff and/or the district attorney. There is no action on your agenda tonight regarding a vote of confidence or no confidence, but we will take your direction and prepare a letter, legislative opinion, for your next agenda, a letter to the district attorney regarding the policy changes that are of concern. So that'll be on your next agenda.
A timeframe so that...
One of the speakers, Colette Lewis, asked about Friendship Park. I am happy to report some good news about that. We've qualified a federal CDBG project for a million-dollar project to renovate a number of the park facilities there regarding the graffiti on trees, her inability to report. I promise I'll get out there tomorrow and turn those in personally because I hate graffiti and try to never drive by it whenever I see it, but I'll get down there tomorrow and take a look. I'm looking for other comments regarding illegal fireworks. We had a couple of speakers on that issue. If approved tonight, a $200 reward would go into effect, and that'll be taken up by council later in the agenda. And I think that's all I've... Oh, Health Department. A couple of people asked about the Health Department. So I'd just like to take this moment to say, we have submitted a 12-component overview and plan to the California State Health Department. They've assigned three high-ranking officials to review that. We have a meeting scheduled with them now for next week that we might hear their comments about the plan that we submitted. So that's a work in progress. And I think that's all I've got this evening in response to the public comments. Thank you.
Thank you. City Managers' Report?
I have a brief report, and I'll try and make it briefer given the hour. It's approaching 10:30. I know you've got other business tonight. I just wanted to take a moment to credit our keynote speaker at yesterday's Memorial Day event, our own police officer, Eric Melnick. I thought he spoke eloquently and from the heart, and I really appreciated his courage to stand up and share those remarks with us yesterday. Next slide. I just wanted to make mention of the fact that vaccinations are still available, and people are encouraged to take advantage of this moment. We are still in a state of emergency through which we receive mutual aid, including personnel, access to equipment, and other available resources that we can assist, that municipalities like ours, as a political subdivision of the state under the governor's declared emergency, can assist the community during a local emergency. The Fulgent people have made some inquiry about whether they could segue this into a partnership with the schools, and under the state of local emergency, we highly support anything that'll put vaccination needles in arms, and so we're looking at that. Next slide. I wanted to welcome, we've got a new part-time, two-day-a-week Public Works Director we're bringing in, Mir Fatih. And Mir has more than 30 years' experience directly related in the field of public works. He's a registered civil engineer, and he, first day was today, and he was very happy to get his arms around several of the projects. We're working on project delivery of several different types right now, including, this month, we're implementing a $2 million pavement project, and he's pretty excited to be a part of that. This next slide is just for one of the council members, by way of a resident, had asked for some sidewalk repairs, so we skipped ahead of our $2 million Public Works project and did this piece, just using City Force account. It was only about three yards of concrete, but thank you for bringing that one. It's an especially bad one to our attention. It's under repair. I wanted to make mention of City Hall reopening as of today. I know the countywide lifts are scheduled for the 15th of June. We're immediately available by appointment for fire, building, engineering, planning, code enforcement. We're asking people to come in on the basement level, and we're only want one member of the public per department at a time. We're taking turns. We're asking that people wear masks when in the building. We're also opening a number of other city facilities and events, or hosting events at the Senior Center. Cameron and Senior Center are now accepting rental reservations. Summer concert series is coming in July. I wanted to make mention of a budget Town Hall meeting scheduled for 6:00 PM on June the 9th. We had some attendance at the last one. They asked that we do it again, and we'll cheerfully do that. So on the 9th, please come to these chambers if you're interested. We got some good news. And our Fire Department are sending a couple personnel to pick up a Type 6 Wildland Patrol fire engine that is being given to us on permanent loan from Cal OES Headquarters in Sacramento. It's going to be available for our use and for mutual aid strike team response. When appropriate, it will remain property of the state, but it'll be housed in one of our fire stations. At the last meeting, we announced, and the attorney announced, coming out of closed session, that a Redeval State Deal had been authorized by council. It's now been executed. The successor to the redevelopment agency, M&amp;A Cabaye, have both now signed a purchase and sales agreement for two of the successor agency parcels just above the Sports Complex, the Big League Dreams complex. And significantly, it offers the city a right to repurchase with this, which is a right not contained in the previous documents. I think that's all I've got for this evening. Thanks very much.
And welcome, Mr. Mayor. I know he's here, so I just want to say thank you for being at the council meeting.
Can I just ask one question? So on the Health Department, there was a May 31st deadline with County Department of Health. Can you update the community on that?
Well, the city, for a number of years, has had a contract with the county to deliver Health Department services. A contract is a serious thing, and there's an annual notice provision, which only triggers once a year on the first of the month, which has now come and gone. So we will continue to have that contract in effect and continue to pursue an independent city Health Department of all aspects, working directly with the state.
Onto Consent Calendar. City Council, is there anything you'd like to pull from the consent calendar?
Just number two.
Number two? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Calendar items one through six, with the exception of number two?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Sorry, the move was by Mayor Protem, second by Councilwoman Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Costelanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viado?
Aye. Motion passes. 5-0. Onto item number two, pulled by Councilman Tabatabai. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I only have one question. With the state fully opening on June 15th, can you explain the need for the emergency declaration beyond the 15th?
Through the chair, if I may. The governor, as the state's director of emergency services, who has Office of Emergency Services, has a disaster declaration system in place that enables the local jurisdictions to recover from the disaster, in this case, the pandemic, and to be eligible to receive state and federal grants and aid. That's different from the Health Department orders, which are now thankfully lifting. We intend to not ask that this be renewed and to allow it to lapse as soon as that disaster period ends. Until then, it makes us eligible for these state and federal grants. I mentioned in the Managers' Report, the Fulgent vaccinations, which is a benefit that inures to the community at no cost to the community. So I would recommend that it be continued until everybody gets out of it. It's not like a local disaster, which is an earthquake only affecting us, but rather a statewide, nationwide, global pandemic. And as long as federal FEMA and state OES monies are available, I'd like to avail themselves of them as we are eligible. And when we're no longer eligible, we'll stop this as soon as that moment comes. I just don't know when that is yet.
Any other questions?
Okay, just a quick question. So we have, I think, currently two vaccination sites. One is Cameron Park, and one is our Senior Center. So that eligible for, okay, and for our state or funding, if we don't have this thing, we might have, we don't have this service. Is that true?
Through the chair, that's exactly right. I'll cite another example. Councils aware, recently, we did door knocks on some 1,400 homes of homebound seniors using police officers and firefighters who might want to avail themselves of an in-home vaccination. We didn't get a great participation response rate to that, but we made the extra effort using personnel, sometimes personnel on overtime. Those overtime expenses, as they're related to the pandemic, are eligible for reimbursement. So we want to keep making ourselves eligible, I guess is my point.
So we have our firefighter staff, I saw it at the Cameron, okay, at the Senior Center, helping out to, okay, vaccination for our resident. Okay, I was there checking them out. Okay, so that all this staffing can be reimbursed by the state due to our state of emergency?
Yes, sir. We're trying to be judicious. We're trying to only do things that are directly related to the pandemic. When they come out a year later and audit you, that you don't want to be the municipality that acts like they just won the Lotto or something. So we're trying to be very cautious and deliberate and intentional. But during the pandemic, those monies have proved very useful to us, and we've taken advantage of them.
So in that way, okay, state of emergency is still important for us due to state's dear funding for some of, reimburse some of our expenditure because the pandemic is 100% over yet. Okay, we, okay, maybe open up June 15, but meaning we still have a thing lingering, we still want, okay, resident have a chance to vaccinate. Okay, so in that way, okay, I think we need to continue to have this, at least for this month, then we see how the July look like. So I want to move the motion to approve.
And I'll second that.
Roll call.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Councilwoman Diaz. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Costelanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viado?
Aye. Motion passes. Onto public hearings. And I believe this, we can combine all three, correct? Seven, eight, nine. Okay.
I believe there'll be one presentation for all three. We're gonna need to take three separate motions, though, too.
And I have two speakers.
Okay.
Goodness. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, city staff, and members of the community. My name is Shonin Kano. I'm with Willdan Financial Services, and I put together the Engineers' Report. Tonight's proceedings are being held to obtain approval for the levy of fiscal year 21/22 assessments for landscape maintenance districts four, six, and seven. These proceedings are required to continue to provide maintenance and service work under the city's landscape maintenance districts four, six, and seven, and to collect assessments on the property tax bill for fiscal year 21/22. At its regular meeting on May 18th, 2021, the City Council preliminarily approved the Engineers' Report. The City Council also declared its intention to levy and collect the assessment for fiscal year 21/22, and set June 1st as the date for the public hearing. This is that public hearing. Next slide, please. LMD 4, 6, and 7 are 1972 landscaping and lighting districts. Their districts are utilized by local governments to pay for landscaping, lighting, and other improvements and services located within public areas. It is a form of benefit assessment that is based on the concept of assessing properties that benefit from improvements being financed. Next slide, please. LMD 4, 6, and 7 pay for landscaping, installation, and maintenance, including but not limited to landscaping, planting, shrubbery, trees, hard sidewalk maintenance, et cetera. Public lighting facilities, including but not limited to poles, fixtures, bulbs, posts, pedestals, et cetera, as well as cleaning, sandblasting, and painting of walls and other improvements to remove or cover graffiti. 1972 active districts also pay for statues, fountains, recreational and playground equipment courts, as well as public restroom. Next slide, please. The assessment or charge is based on the cost or budget and the benefit parcels received from the improvements. The assessment or charge that pay for ongoing services will continue as long as the service is being provided. Next slide, please. Costs within each LMD are charged only to properties that directly benefit from the improvements. Revenues within each LMD are used only for improvements within each specific LMD. There is no commingling. Next slide, please. Now we have the map for LMD 4, which is located within Amar Road, Nogales Street, and La Puente Road. Next slide, please. LMD 6 is located alongside Cameron and Grand Avenue. LMD 7 is located along Hillside Drive. The equivalent Dwelling Unit, or EDU, method of assessment is utilized for the LMDs and establishes a basic unit or basic value of benefit. The EDU method of apportioning benefits is typically seen as the most appropriate and equitable assessment methodology for assessment districts as the benefit to each parcel from improvements are apportioned as a function of comparable property characteristics, which may include land use and property size. Next slide. Annually, staff reviews and analyzes the maintenance need of each LMD in conjunction with the funds on hand to arrive at the net costs to be distributed among the parcels within each LMD. An assessment rate is determined for each LMD by dividing the LMD costs by the LMD total EDUs. It has been determined that the districts are underfunded. The assessments are not enough to cover the costs of increasing maintenance and services. As a result, maintenance has decreased over the years due to limited funding. Assessment rates can only be increased with the property owner vote, also known as Proposition 218. City staff would like to visit Proposition 218 process next year for their districts. LMD 4 rates, there are no changes to the rates for previous year rates. This district includes both residential and commercial properties. As you can see, each zone is broken up by the property type as well as benefit type. The more the benefit of the improvements, the higher rate for that property type. The total assessment for this district will be approximately $1 million. Next slide. For LMD six, again, there's no changes to previous year rates. This development consists of single-family properties at a rate of 650 per property. Total seven for this district will be approximately 154,000. LMD seven, no changes again to previous year rates. This development consists of single-family properties and broken up into two zones. C1 are unimproved properties or undeveloped properties at a rate of 13922, while C2 are improved properties or developed properties at a rate of 46406. The total assessment for this district will be approximately 173,000. Now, for next steps, city council holds a public hearing. City council approves the resolution, which permits assessments to be placed on the property tax roll. This now concludes our presentation on LMD four, six, and seven. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Before we go to questions, I just wanted to verify with the city clerk on all these public hearings that these proper legal notice has been given.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. So, questions, city council?
Okay, so basically, you have District four, five, and seven, four, six, and seven. And then now you say, first you say it's underfunded, but then you say we have no change?
Right, right. So at this point, there are no changes to the rates just because we have to go through the Proposition 218 process, and that includes a vote with the property owners.
So basically, the property owner have to vote on it?
Correct, correct.
This is like HOA, like similar, okay? Because, but we, city collect their property tax and into the trust account for their district and utilize this money to maintenance their common area.
Correct, correct.
Okay, and because the hillside, they have a lot of common area, especially the slope and pitch on the top, and that is extremely density of the wood, okay? And the brushes, and it creates fire hazards, okay? A lot of resident complain, okay, and we only want out of Blue Moon. I don't know how regularly we base on this budget and to clean potential fire hazard.
I'm going to turn to the city staff. I'm not sure as far as how often they go out there and clean everything.
Because on hillside, you know hillside, if you go to the Google map, you see they have quite a lot in between the home. They have, okay, and open space, but it's up to here. I don't think anybody can go on the top. But there's a lot of tree and a lot of vegetation, and it's been overgrown. And I think one time, couple of years ago, the resident really request, and we went inside and cleaned. But I don't know what that budget is belong to, okay? And this, your budget on the district number six on the hillside? Or this is extra budget that city have to pay because it's a tree, and this belong to the tree trimming? So I don't know where the, whose jurisdiction is from the HOA or this special district, okay, maintenance district, or it belong to our city budget? So maybe somebody can answer this question? Because this has been ages of issue on those hillside. And the four, six, seven, basically, is all in the hills, hillside, and...
Right, right. I know that the maintenance has decreased over time, and that's why you still see all the shrubbery and things like that. But as far as how often they can go out there and clean everything, I'm not positive.
So this is a question. I don't know who can answer that. And second question? And I think I answered, I asked this question almost yearly, okay? Maybe last year, remember, I asked this question, too. And, but this is a new one. You said graffiti removal. So graffiti removals is including the dis-maintenance district, that meaning including?
Within four, six, and seven, within the area, that's what it pays for. So, but it can't be from other areas. So we can't use those funds to go from...
So the common area, but it's not on somebody's wall in the residential, somebody just...
Right, right. It's public property.
And that is potentially either property owner or city to remove it. But we're talking about common area, maybe the garage, this and that, and that is belong to the, you would, belong to the district, and that removal will be into this budget. Am I right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you so much. And then, do I have an answer for?
Yeah.
You know, if you see the hillside, and I think, I think you remember for so many years, every year, I always asking about potential fire hazard because, and don't forget, last year, we got a fire on the, right? Okay, and then potentially catastrophe, okay? And especially right now, July fourth and the firework, okay, fire, illegal firework will become an issue. Yeah, go ahead.
So, Madam Mayor, the districts do include landscaping, but it's not the entire hillside. So the scope of work that's currently in the districts is, and these photos from before, three feet from the curb and three feet clearance from the property line. So that's as far as the landscape maintenance goes, and it's up to six feet high from the bushes and shrubs. So that's the limited area of where the landscape maintenance districts maintain. So the hillside is not covered as a routine...
Hillside is not covered, then who is going to pay?
Well, it's currently not part of the scope. I'm sorry. Let me rephrase.
Okay, then who is jurisdiction to?
It would be part of the landscape maintenance district, but we'd have to change the scope of the work.
Okay, and another, okay, issue you're talking about is underfunded. You want to do some kind of, have a resident to vote on it because they have to pay. So they have to vote on, they agree or not. But you need to tell them what kind of service, okay? And the increase, okay, due to what reason, okay? And I understand currently the gas, okay, the manpower, the labor, okay, et cetera, et cetera, so increase. And, but you need to, I think the problem is, a lot of landscape district, lighting district, people have a concern, okay? They collect the money into the trust account, but they didn't really keep the neighborhood safe or really doing the maintenance, including the north side. And I think south side and shadow of the common greenbelt area. So we need to, if we want to, okay, and increase, okay, all this kind of issue, you tell people how you can keep their neighborhood nice and pretty.
Right, right.
And safe, more than...
Yes, absolutely. What we want to do with the Proposition 218 process is educate the property owners about what's going to be changing. When they increase the rates, we're going to hold meetings to...
You go, you have a hearing, have all the homeowner coming out, or, okay, property owner in the neighborhood coming out to kind of know, so they can bring their concern about, okay, all this tree dense, okay, area, how, okay, with a bunch of vegetation, okay? You see a lot of places really overgrown. I think you know what I'm talking about. And they grow crazy, and potentially is really a issue. So how we utilize this, that fund, okay? And if you want to increase, okay, I think you need to have a hearing with the resident and tell them, okay, how we do it, and is that including, or this is belong to the city in the old general area, or this belong to the district? I think, okay, I think this is something extremely important. If they want them to pay more, they have to tell them what kind of service is going to, okay, improve, okay? And so that, so anyway, but today is just notification.
Right, and nothing's changing. It's the same, the same scope that's been followed for many, many years now.
I understand. Okay, again, I went through this five times. So I know this is number six time, okay? So I understand, okay? So in that way, I know...
The council have, oh, we have questions here. Go ahead.
I noticed on one of your slides, you, it mentioned something about graffiti removal? Where specifically would you be removing graffiti in those areas? I'm just wondering. I thought this was all about shrubs and cleaning maintenance, and I was surprised to see graffiti removal. So I guess...
I will turn to city staff. I don't know which locations, where they're located at within the district.
If I may answer generally, one of the difficulties we have with this and these landscape districts, it's a love-hate relationship. We would love more service, but we'd hate to pay for it. And so we constantly struggle with keeping up with dead wood, dead falls, graffiti, whatever. We're recommending that this be adopted tonight, just to keep the current levy in place. We can put it on the tax bill and continue to collect this. And that we would then be directed to return to give a comprehensive look at what services are provided, what services are required, and what that would cost. So first step tonight, just renew it, put it back on the tax bill as it has been. We recognize that it's not sufficient, but we want to take a holistic look at it. One other piece, council's aware it's in play, is our state legislators are helping us with some legislation that will allow us a broader range of eligible activities for the money we don't have enough of. But some of these were enacted under different types of enabling legislation, the 1911 Act. With the state legislation, which is now progressing, each legislator is asked by the governor to limit to 12 bills, and ours is one of the 12 for Senator Rubio. It just went through on consent. We expect the next round will go through on consent again. It just enables us a broader range of target activities for which that money would be eligible. But we're recommending, again, just to recap, you approve it tonight the way it is, and that we go back and give a holistic, comprehensive look at all of these so we can reconstitute them going forward.
I think I can answer your question because, okay, I have the resident complaining about the hillside, and they have a drainage, cement drainage, and that has graffiti.
That's where the graffiti?
Yeah, there's somebody just, okay, and a bunch of kid over there smoking dope at the same time, and just vandalized, okay? And that is kind of not belong to the homeowner, but at the same time, it's not belong to the park, it's the hillside. So possible that is the, okay, am I right? Oh, thank you. You always say right, okay?
Of course.
Since you said that, I move the motion to approve.
Wait, we have to have public comment. So is there anybody who wish to speak on this, for or against?
Yes, Mayor, I have two speakers. Our first speaker, I don't know whether it's opposed or neutral, is Elsie Messman.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor, we have five minutes for these.
Okay.
Hey, my name, you know, is Elsie Messman, and I've been living in West Covina. Next month will be 48 years. And on District four, first of all, on one of the notices I had seen, they said there was 10 years since they got a raise. And then in another article, I see it's 15 years. And I don't think anybody on staff here has been in the city for 10 or 15 years. But anyway, this has to go on our tax bill. And the residents that I've talked to feel that we do need a meeting, and we need a breakdown of everything that we're paying for because we don't know what we're paying for. They just have one amount, and that's it. And then they have somebody's salary on it, and we got to pay for all their benefits and all the rest of this stuff. So staffing insurance, and I think that we do need a meeting because everybody has to approve it. So it just can't be, you know, raised just by hearsay sort of thing. But I think that, like I said, because there's a lot of things that you guys have been adding on and adding on and adding on, and this is never-ending, you know? And it's like the graffiti sort of thing. I said, you know what? I said, the city pays for graffiti every place else. Why can't they pay in ours if they paint a wall sort of thing? So it, a lot remains to be seen, but I think we do have to have a meeting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Fred Sykes.
Been living here for 42 years. And there's an agreement. And it has boundaries in that agreement. And so I concur with Mr. Messman that there needs to be a meeting to clarify things because I can see that somehow magically, that agreement is starting to expand and get fluid. And I'm particularly concerned, and hope that we can work out some kind of way without having to go through litigation, that anything outside of that agreement, those finances that were taken away should be restored. I'll repeat. There is an agreement. And somehow, things have gotten fluid with our finances for that District four. And I think that they, those monies should be returned that are not defined in the agreement. And I certainly don't remember graffiti being in that agreement. But I'm not perfect. We do need to look at it and clarify. So I am definitely with Elsie on that. We need to meet with city officials and find out what's what, what are we paying for? And hopefully, going forward, we'll get it back to how it's written and stick to that agreement. Thank you.
No, I don't think staff is really paying that much attention to this because I went through and I had seen where one, one of our suburban water, anyway, on one of the areas, we had to pay for one month over $5,000 for water. And that's a lot of money that we have to pay for water. So I don't think that either people aren't reporting it or something is wrong someplace. So I think that more attention has to be paid to that because that's a lot of water wasted, as far as I'm concerned, and especially with the way the water is now. But that's, $5,000 for one month is a lot of, a lot of water, and a lot of money, too.
Thank you. It's a returning question type tonight. It's just you two. Go ahead. Talk to you.
What's his name, Mike? The guy that...
Mike Cressup?
Cressup. He's not here tonight, is he?
No.
Yeah, because I think he explained about that $5,000 water bill. There was a broken valve. And I remember that day, and I did report it to suburban and to the city. It was on Stacy. Well, that's different. That one I don't know about. Stacy had a flood, and so hopefully, again, that's why we need the meeting to clarify what's what.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna request that.
We turn back to you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions?
No, Mayor, no further questions, and I received nothing in writing in opposition or in favor.
Council has further questions?
Just a comment. I know the landscape maintenance districts have long been a source of complaints from our residents. I think it is important that we look at all details, all aspects of how the money is being spent. I mentioned a couple of times earlier today, I did venture around our city and look at the landscape maintenance districts. Some of the hills, the bushes are so overgrown, they look like trees. That creates perfect hiding spots for the homeless. That's a danger to all of us, and to them, too, potentially. Some areas where there's potential fire hazard. So to Mr. Sykes and Ms. Messman, yes, we certainly will look at all the details. We do want to know the best, most efficient way to solve these problems because I could say this has been an issue as far back as I can remember. So hopefully, it will be embraced as a necessary process. Thank you.
Did we have a question, Mr. Olmos? Did you have a question? Sure. We'll have someone to assist you.
Thank you very much, members of the city council. Just as a quick possibility, as we're addressing these landscaping issues and other possibilities, does, and maybe this may be for the city manager, is there a running list that we can either begin or create that can entail the city identifying ways that the community can get involved? Let's say, for example, with these landscaping issues, a cost-effective way to address some of it could be, let's say, getting Boy Scout troops to do this as part of their Eagle projects or other such needs so that it could actually facilitate greater community involvement while at the same time minimizing costs? Thank you.
City manager?
Mayor, we would welcome volunteer contributions to the district...
Mayor, we would welcome volunteer contributions to the districts, and
Kindly, I'm sorry.
Happy to include that in the meeting that we will schedule regarding these districts.
And quickly, I followed, sorry, okay, and regarding the liability issue, I really worry about the kid, okay, and going to the, you have a chainsaw, you have all this equipment, okay, it's less safe. I 100% agree with you, a community involvement, and as work together, volunteer, but at the same time, we have to watch out the safety, and I don't know, on the hillside and all that kind of thing, is that maybe some other project for...
Well, safety first. We don't want minors with chainsaws. I hear you. We'll be careful.
Those hills are tricky.
Very tricky, okay? I saw it, it's not even human, you can climb up, okay, due to they don't have a trail. So, but the trees are really overgrown, okay, including all this vegetation.
I just wanted to piggyback on what Mayor Protim Castellanos said about, as we have these meetings, if we can, we had a conversation about the tree trimming. If we can really kind of lay out timelines for residents of when things are being done, so it's very open, it's very transparent, they can see where their money's being spent, they know when it's going to be spent, and I think that will not only ease concerns that residents have of money being wasted, but also, you know, they can see that the city is actually using the funds in the way they're meant to be, and builds, again, that trust in the community, so.
So just follow previously, move to, move the motion to approve, but, okay, I, okay, I concur all the, my colleague regarding, okay, and we need a public hearing about all what the detail, how we spend, and the money, and the most important thing, I think, as a trust account, we need to make sure this is trust account, collect from the taxpayer in this district, and this money has been spent in this district. So that accounting, they need to provide for that district resident and business property owner, since they pay for, okay, the service. So I think with that, people will ease their doubt, okay, and hopefully, they understand, okay, and they can input about some of their concern about the hillside, the common area that is really problematic. So hopefully, that will kind of help with that gentleman talking about a sense of community and working together. So I move the motion to approve.
Second.
So this is going to be for Resolution Number 2021-56, and this is for Landscape Maintenance District Number 4. We'll need to take each district separately. So I have a motion by Councilman Wu, and a second by Mayor Protim Castellanos. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viado?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Onto the next.
Well, this would be item number 8, Landscape Maintenance District Number 6, Resolution 2021-57.
So move.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Wu, a second by Mayor Protim Castellanos. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viado?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Onto the next.
Item number 9, Landscape Maintenance District Number 7, Resolution 2021-58.
So move for approval?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu, a second by Councilwoman Diaz. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viado?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, that ends that. Now on to departmental regular matters, item number 10.
City Manager, who will present the update?
I see our fire, our Chief of Police.
All right, last item of the night, just make it good, right? Right, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and members of the viewing audience, those that are left. The city has taken a zero tolerance policy towards fireworks violations. Every year between May and July, the city and surrounding areas see an increase in fireworks-related services. I was out there last year, and last year was probably one of the worst that I've seen in a while. With the limited number of officers that we have out there and the increased number of calls, it makes it difficult for us to get to other calls. So when you have a backlog of 15 or 20 fireworks calls along with the other calls, you can see that the officers are extended to, our response times are extended to get any other calls. Once we're on scene of a fireworks call, it's difficult sometimes to locate where the fireworks are actually coming from. If it's from a backyard, and I've stated this before, sometimes it's difficult to pinpoint exactly where it is. And sometimes, you know, the residents themselves are just reluctant to even bother with it, but that doesn't stop them from calling. This is problematic for us. So I've always encouraged the officers to come up with, you know, things that will actually assist us, and one of our sergeants came up with this program. It's not new. We have a graffiti program that's on the books already. There is a reward for $100. It hasn't gone away, it still exists, and he thought that this would be a good idea. After looking at it, I did not disagree with him. The purpose of this is not to bring unwanted harm to the residents that's reporting it, but rather, from our perspective, it's to help us reduce repeatedly going back to the same area for the same call, if we can avoid it. With that being said, the Police Department is presenting this fireworks program. Like I said, it's similar to the graffiti program, and it works in this manner. Any person who witnesses illegal firework activity can call and report it 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. They can remain anonymous, and I have taken to thought what Ms. Portis said about diamond off your neighbor, but when you receive 100 calls in a night for fireworks, I mean, I would say some people are pretty annoyed. But you can remain anonymous, and we'll take down your information. The officer will respond to the area. If the officer responds to the area, and they get the description, identity, the location, and we actually cite the subject, that person will be entitled to a $200 reward. If we have multiple calls in the same area, then it's the first person who gives the information that will receive the reward. All of these detailed transactions will be logged, so that we can have an account of where the money is actually going out to. The Police Department feels the program will be successful in encouraging citizens to call and report any firework violations. If granted tonight, we are asking the council that we start this program immediately. That is the end of my report, and I can answer any questions that you have.
Council have a question? I have a question. If they reported anonymous, are they still entitled to the reward?
Yes.
And complete, okay, so they could be completely anonymous and...
Yeah, so what would happen is, they would call in and say, hey, you know, I'm calling to report fireworks at 123 Walk and Don't Walk. I do not wish to have officers contact me, or my neighbors, or anything. I want to remain anonymous. They will take down the person's name, because we got to know who we're going to give the reward to. We'll send the officer to the area, they'll go straight to wherever they said it's going to be. If we make contact and we do issue a site, then we'll call them back and give them the reward.
Okay, so they're not coming to the person's house?
Right.
Okay, so...
Right, if they wish to remain anonymous, they can.
Okay.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. So at $200, this would be roughly 10 rewards?
Well, that's what it will start out to. I mean, it could be more than that, if we end up citing that many people, sure. We would have to obviously ask for more money if we got to that point. But we're starting out with 2,000, which will be 10 rewards, yes.
And then the other question, you did talk about using discretion with certain fireworks. You know, you talked about sparklers and things like that. The scenario, someone calls, and they see the person with the sparklers, do they still get the reward even though the officers may decide not to cite that?
They only get the reward if we cite.
Okay.
Okay, okay, I think one resident say we chose to zero tolerance. No, we didn't choose that, okay? It was voted, okay, as a zero tolerance about eight years ago, as I remember, it's 80, 20, 80% of residents, okay, vote for zero tolerance about a firework, meaning, okay, that is a voted decision, and we just have to enforce. Then the problem is, it's just, we're just so difficult to enforce this law, okay, and during this season, and we just see the firework, illegal fireworks, especially even my area, okay, close to the mesa, okay, some people nighttime, they with a what, N90 or something, and with loud, okay, sometimes even, okay, and extremely dangerous firework, okay, and potentially burn down people's home, okay? And I understand, maybe some of save and send, okay, but if you have a lead, okay, then you have some other thing. You cannot tolerate just one thing, and due to the voter, over the vote, say zero tolerance. So in that way, we just have no choice, unless we go to the ballot again and see what the voter decision, if they want to change. But without it changed, okay, okay, and in that way, we just have to enforce the law. So in that way, I really don't have any issue with this, and while they're safe and sorry, you see the fire, okay, currently potentially wildfires, okay, this year due to the drought, and the people really worry about the situation, and that we, somebody just want to have a pleasure in five minutes, and then maybe it will become a potential catastrophe. So in that way, that's how our job, okay? And some, we just have to sacrifice some of the freedom, and then maybe they can go to other city, they allow them to do it. So in that way, I want to move the motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilman Wu, and a second by Mayor Protim Castellanos. Councilmember Tabatabai?
No.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Castellanos?
Aye.
Mayor Lopez Viado?
Aye. Motion passes 4-1. Mayor, councilmember reports any AB 1234 conference and meeting from any of the council? No? City Council requests, item 11 is Councilwoman Diaz's request. Go ahead and speak on its behalf.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I'd like to instruct the staff to review the current program for graffiti removal, and make any necessary implementations, like a cash award, or for reporting the crime, and institute a fine. I know we have one now, but I think we need to raise that. And also, if they cannot pay that fine, institute some sort of a community service program for these vandals that are causing a problem throughout our city, and making our city look really bad. And it's not just about making it look bad, but it's about, I'm concerned about gangs. I'm concerned about gangs coming in and crossing out other gangs. And so I think that we need to really take a good look at this, and maybe increase those fines, like I said, and offer a reward for our residents to get involved in reporting any of these vandals committing these crimes. So that's what I'm saying.
Uh, any...
This is Madam Mayor, right?
Yes.
Okay, and I would support this, because currently, our graffiti is totally out of control, okay? And I know we have our staff running around the places, and just lady talking about South Side, and speaking to North Side, South Side, East Side, West Side, all the side, we have graffiti all the places. So since we need to really stop this graffiti outbreak, okay, and we need to on top of, make sure, okay, and that we will, we can stop this, and we can cover, hopefully, same color of the paint, okay? And we don't want to create more problem, okay, rather than fix the problem. So our staff need to work on that, but I 100% support, okay, and we need to do the same thing, okay? And maybe Chief can, or maybe wait for next time, suggestion, what we should bring back, from the suggestion, maybe 1,000 and 500 similar, right? Is that, is that, Councilwoman Diaz, your suggestion?
I would recommend a fine of $1,000 and a reward of $500. That was my plan.
I personally...
A recommendation.
Yeah, zero tolerance for graffiti, and, you know, for those who don't have money, they can paint it and clean it up.
We do have that, and we can increase the fines. As a matter of fact, we were going to bring that back anyway. It's set at $100 now. We can increase it to whatever level you would like. The only thing that I have to check is, if we arrest someone for vandalism, so now you have a crime, then we issue them a fine, I got to make sure that that's not double jeopardy, right? So, you know, if they're going to get prosecuted criminally, then we got to make sure that our fine doesn't impede that. But we'll definitely check that, and make sure that we get one or the other.
Thank you.
On the flip side of that, if the DA is not going to prosecute, then of course, the fine is what we'll do. We'll just issue all fines, and we won't even, you know, go the prosecution route. But we do need to just research that a little bit.
So if they're not able to pay that fine, can we mandate that they do community service?
Well, that would have to come through the court.
Right.
We, as a city, cannot do that, but remember, if it's a juvenile, it's usually the parent that we go after for the fine, the juvenile. So now, who do you have do the community service? The parent, or the one that's actually doing it, right? You can have a good set of parents, who just has a child that's out of control. So we got to be careful of that. That's something we really got to look at. We don't have the authority to force them to do that. It has to go through the court, and now, if we're going through the court, we may not be able to find the way we want. So I just have to look at that.
The current graffiti reward that we currently have in place, because prior to me being in council, I actually reported it and followed the guy who graffitied, and actually, Officer Eric Melnick, who presented yesterday, he was the one who was able to capture, and, you know, he visited, nobody told me about the fine. I mean, I did that, I didn't hear anything.
We didn't have any money in the kitty, so we're keeping it from you. It's just always been there. What happened was, as we decreased law enforcement, it just kind of fell by the wayside. It's still on the books, it's still there. If someone called and we actually arrested someone, they could still call in and say, where's my money? We'd have to give it to them. It's just something that we didn't keep up with, because we didn't have the people to keep up with it. But as you can see now, it is one of our biggest issues, and we need to pay some attention to it. So we'll bring it back, we'll increase the fine, and then we'll, I'll check into those areas for you.
Perfect. Thank you. Nobody against? Okay, so I guess we'll move forward with that. I know Mr. Mayor stayed throughout the entire duration. Did you want to come up really quick and introduce yourself?
Introduce yourself.
Thank you for staying this late. I know, too.
Welcome back to the government.
Honorable Mayor, and honorable councilmember, I'm Mayor Fatahi. Yes, I was sitting there all night, but enjoying the meeting. Learned a lot about the city, the way the city is run, and I'm very pleased to take this opportunity to serve this beautiful city, and residents of this wonderful city under Mr. Carmen's direction. And I don't have much to say, it's too late, but I can answer any questions you have.
And I met you this morning at the City Manager one-on-one meeting, and, okay, and you introduced yourself, okay, and somebody promised, like, we don't need 30 days, we only need 15 days to improve the city.
I just have to get, well, actually, I was driving around the city, and I was looking at those landscape area, four, six, seven, whatever, and some of those trees, yeah, so I see, but we're going to take them away, and some of those graffitis are on, you know, the trash cans and signs and everything, it's a part of the landscape, we're going to take care of them. I'm going to get to it pretty soon, maybe a bit more than 15 days.
Yeah, we have 16 parks, okay, and the parks with the trash, okay, like oozed out, okay, and that is really become an issue for our residents regarding the park issue, and I think they including a public work for you to take a look, how to make our park presentable, okay, how to make sure the trash, okay, and make sure, I know, we just impose, put a lot of pressure on you, but, hey, you, by amount of recommendation, you're like a superhuman to help us overnight to improve our city, so we put a high hope in you. I know, just, okay, talk to you, I know... I know, just to, okay, talk to you, I know you are...
I appreciate, I appreciate the vote of confidence.
Stay so late, okay, meaning why you really passionate to serve and help us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Welcome again.
Appreciate it.
Is there anything else from the council? Seeing none, this concludes our meeting, and have a good night.
Thank you so much, thank you.